Okay zoning board, we are live, we are recording, phone lines are opened, go for it.
Thank you and welcome everybody to the town of East Hampton zoning board of appeals meeting for September 30th, 2025. We have a number of scheduled public hearings this evening. I'll read the first one into the record and this is, Eric Brown is in the pole position on this one this evening. The first one is Hampton Wyatt at 10 Tyson Lane in East Hampton Suffolk, Texas map number 300-189-67.2. The size and location is 71,996 square feet, which is 1.6 acres at 10 Tyson Lane, map of James Tyson lot number five, map number 4863 in East Hampton. The description is to allow an existing 902 square foot structure to remain as an accessory structure greater than the maximum allowable gross floor area and to replace a four-foot fence with a six-foot fence within jurisdiction and minimum setbacks of freshwater wetlands. A natural resources special permit pursuant to 255420 of the East Hampton town and two variances are required for this application. One variance of 302 square feet is required from 2551123 of the town code to allow the existing cottage to remain as an accessory structure with a gross floor area of 902 square feet where 600 square feet is the maximum allowable. One variance of 68.1 feet is required from 255430 of the town code to allow the existing fencing to remain 31.9 feet from freshwater wetlands where 100 foot setbacks are required and any other relief necessary. The zoning district is a residence, ex flood zone, NVE8, and the secret class is type two. Counsel, do we have proper affidavit of service and posting?
I reviewed the affidavits and notice and posting and everything seems to be in order and the board has jurisdiction over this hearing.
Thank you. This is my report. I visited the site and it was properly posted. This is, this is the cottage that is slated to be moved over towards Further Lane. And this is also a site under construction. There's a main residence that is being constructed as part of an existing building permit and you'll see that next. All right, I'm walking into the site, you'll see the, the main residence being in, in construction on the, right there, next. This is the cottage that is in question and part of tonight's hearing, this, as far as making it an accessory building, next. Scanning out over, just showing over the dunes, I have another photo of the dune. This is the double dune section, which is absolutely stunning. Every time I see these things, it's just floors me. Next. And there you go. And I, the fence in question is over to the right. I didn't get a close-up of it, but it's into the back part of the property line. That's the last photo. Thank you. Have the agent to the owners, Eric?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Eric Brown, Ackerman Partners, 34 Pentagon Road for the applicant. As you can see, Mr. Ackerman is here actually in the room and we've also been joined by Brent Green, who was the caretaker. You guys tell me, do you want me to take you through the history of how we got to where we are tonight? And in terms of the structures, I mean, is that?
As long as we're not here till midnight, Eric, that's fine.
Okay, well, I mean, you know, I can, you know, if, I can, I can give you the Reader's Digest version.
That's fine.
Okay, that's fine. Tyler, do we have an aerial of the site? Thank you very much. All right, so, but until about 19, the 1980s, this lot that we're talking about tonight and the lot immediately to the west or a single parcel. It was originally approved with a traditional shingle style East Hampton oceanfront cottage, which was on the southerly third of what would be, what is now the westerly lot. In the early 1960s, two other structures showed up on the easterly side, one of which was a 1,250 square foot barn garage and the other was this, the structure that's the topic of tonight's hearing. The barn garage is no longer there. The owner tore it down about two, about two years ago. Roy, I know that Lenny has mentioned that the cottages that we're talking about tonight, we was moved from another location. We thought it was moved from the, there is a, there's a large, up in this area, there is a large ag reserve that has been farmed forever. And if you look at very early photographs of that from the 50s, the resolution is terrible, but they did identify structures on there and it looks big, just based upon the footprint, like this may have been one of the agricultural structures there. So that was then, that was then moved over to, to this site. How was it done? It was done under what we used to refer to as the paper subdivision rule, where if you could demonstrate to the building inspector that in fact, were you to subdivide your property, you could erect two residences in conformance with zoning. If you could prove that, then, then you did not have to, you know, actually undertake the subdivision. So in about 1980, the, the properties were subdivided. As you can see, the, the sort of tortured property line on the, on the west side there was, was done to avoid having to move any of the structures on that site. And of course, what that created was two lots, one with a large residence and the other with a residence nonetheless, albeit a much smaller one. And then in the 90s, the, the photo that Roy showed in the beginning is a structure that was brought by Helmut Lang to this property as an artist studio to do his design work. It is permitted both as an artist studio and it also has a variance to be larger than the maximum size permitted under, under the artist studio regulations. Our client then purchased this property. They own properties both to the east and to the north, all the way up to, to the edge of Further Lane. And what, it's a very large family. The properties are very heavily used during the season, but also, you know, year round. And what they wanted to do on the, on the subject property we're talking about tonight is build a larger house to accommodate their grandchildren and their children. We spoke to, the problem of course being in making that application is that we have two, you know, we had a residence on there already. So we went to Joe Palermo and initially I had asked him if he would allow us to take some of the pre-existing non-conforming legal GFA that we had from the, from the garage that was taken down and just apply it to this other structure. And he was, I think for largely for record keeping issues, he was not comfortable with that. So we agreed to come to you guys to seek a variance to allow this to remain as an accessory structure and oversize. Joe also asked us to, you know, to remove all the things that make it a residence, which has been done, to fence it off as you saw, and to board up the windows and not let anybody in there, which is, which is the, which is the current configuration now. It's in the location. It's, it's been in for the last 65 years. There's no inclination to move it. The, and obviously the new main house required ARB approval because all of this is ag reserve or adjacent to ag reserve. The ARB expressed a desire to see both this little cottage and the Helmut Lang structure preserved. Just so the, I, I will try to wrap it up now, but that, the Helmut Lang structure, last year we received site plan approval to move it across the street to the ag reserve area as an agricultural structure. That, that, that field in the center of Tyson Lane has had its development rights stripped. So it can only be used for agriculture. It's in both ag reserve and it's burdened with an ag easement in favor of the iconic land trust. The family uses it for agricultural production, fruit trees, you know, garden crops, beehives. And so we're gonna, that, that structure on October 16th will go across the street to the location approved by the, by the planning board and the ARB.
That's the one on the survey that says to be moved to 310 Further Lane?
Correct. That's correct. That's correct. And I don't, I mean, I don't have a lot else, you know, I don't have a lot more to add, but.
Just, just to verify, the property immediately to the east is also?
Yes.
That family?
The same owner.
So it's, it's almost like they're in common ownership?
Yeah. It's the same, it's the, it's the same family.
Same family.
Yeah. I mean, they own, they own this, excuse me, over here, obviously this, and then there, you can't see them here, but there are some residential lots and one lot with a tennis court that are on the edge. And then north of that begins the, the farm field that's in production.
The, the TAM suggested you're volunteering to take the plumbing out of the existing structure.
Yeah, we've, we've removed, the plumbing in the kitchen have been removed. Joe Palermo asked us to do that as a condition for allowing us to continue to construct the residence. And so we did that and then his, his office inspected it. And the way, you know, the reason it's, it's fenced and boarded up is, you know.
And then it's going to be used as a playhouse?
Yes.
So just define for us what a playhouse is and your, and your taking on this. How's it going to be used by grandchildren? Is that what you mean?
Yes. Yes. So this, as I said, I think, Ed, the, the family is very large. There are grandchildren and great grandchildren. And, you know, I, I think they would just, we, we would prefer, I mean, we could cut 300 square feet off the thing and it would then be, you know, conform, you know, conforming, provided we, you know, it's not used as a residence. But, you know, the family and to a lesser extent, I think the ARB wanted to see it preserved in the, you know, the way it is now, you know, and that's, you know, that's really why we're here.
Any other questions, board members?
Then, the house though, it's not considered like a historic or original structure. I mean, you said it's been?
Well, we've, we've kind of gone back and forth on this.
You said moved from a farm.
Jane, I, I think, I think what it is, is the closest comparison I can think of is the Dominique watch, you know, clock shop that the village has done. If, if you looked at what they brought over as the original structure, it was really the bones of what, of what was left because that structure also was up on the ocean. So I think what's happened here is that the, the, you know, the original structure of the, of the place was, was brought over, but it's been maintained because it's a wood building that as far as we can tell has spent almost all of its life, you know, in, in an environment that's, you know, it's probably about as hostile as it can get in terms of weather conditions being that close to the ocean. And, you know, over the years, it hasn't, it, it hasn't moved away. It's gotten closer, you know, when they moved it in the 60s, it's even closer.
If you gain approval through this application, are you looking to do more work on that structure?
No.
Will you be coming in for a building permit to do any other improvements?
No.
Change all the windows and doors?
No.
So it's basically what we're looking at, I was out there, when you're looking at?
What you're looking at is, is, is what you're, you know.
What you get.
Is what you get. Yeah.
And you are taking the plumbing out and everything voluntarily, so it's would not necessarily, but would it be appropriate to consider some kind of covenant that, you know, it will never be restored to sleeping?
Never be used as a residence, in other words.
Right.
Right? Yes. Okay, yes.
Any other questions, board members?
I'm good.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you very much.
From the planning department. How are you, Tyler?
For the plane dormant.
Tyler, do you swear for him to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I'm doing well, thank you. So I'll just go over briefly what the application is about, which, which was gone over well, well enough as is already. So the project requires two variances and a natural resources special permit. The one variance is to require to allow the existing residence on the parcel to be converted to an accessory structure greater than 600 square feet. It's 902 square feet in total. And then a second variance is required to allow the wire fence proposed to be located 31.9 feet from the wetland boundary to the south of the parcel. The proposed conversion of the existing 902 square foot structure to an accessory playhouse represents some unique history as outlined by the applicant. However, the applicant needs to distinguish this request from others denied by the, by the board. These types of requests are fairly uncommon and require careful review and consideration of precedent. The plane department was able to identify seven applications, I think, since 2008. They're listed in the technical analysis memo. I think there were two approvals and a couple of denials. Those numbers might be slightly off. They're all in the, they're all in the assessment, their, their numbers and, and some, some general facts about them. But with respect to the fence, there do not appear, appear to be any physical constraints or unique features that would prevent the applicant from relocating fence to a more conforming location. Therefore, the applicant should demonstrate how this represents the minimum variance necessary for their use of the property. Other than that, I can answer any questions they might have on the, on the application.
Any other questions?
Thank you for providing the different properties in the TAM. But do you have some thoughts that would be appropriate to share about how this might compare to the ones that were approved versus the ones that were denied?
I remember there was one off the top of my head that had to do with historic building.
Yeah.
That would be the only one, I think that would be any sort of significant consideration between the two. Let's see if I can find it.
Because there's not color here about why the others were denied.
AJCJ LLC approved 342 square foot variance for detached structure which had historical significance. And then the other one was a fairly small variance, 171 square feet, which was to allow mechanicals. And then there was a bunch of denials, some of them small, some of them very large. I mean, the very large ones were obvious. 550 square foot variance is a significant variance. I mean, this is a 50% variance, so it is sizable. But, but certainly every, every variance is unique, especially these because they are so infrequent. But the precedent that they could provide requires, I think, the board to at least state specifically if approved, why it's being approved, how it's different. Because they, they are very, you know, unusual.
Relative to the fence, if you had a suggestion of where you, the planning department would like to see it moved?
Just pulled, pulled back to the, you know, whatever they, they could pull it back to. I think 50 feet is the clearing minimum. There is a clearing line shown on there. Maybe that's an appropriate setback for, for the fencing, just bring it back to where that clearing line is. We didn't have any specific recommendations.
But there is a letter in the file from the group stating that it could damage the structure if moved and that they were requesting an engineer report.
Oh, no, you're talking about the fence.
Just the fence itself.
Oh, you're talking about the fence. Oh, I'm talking about the cottage. I'm sorry.
No, the, the, yeah, the, the existing, it's, it's out of jurisdiction anyways. So I don't, I don't, I don't think there's any issues with, with, as far as wetlands are concerned, they're out of jurisdiction. So it's not really under the board's purview. They're just in for the, the, the GFA variance.
Can they, they would need ARB approval though, because it's a six-foot fence? Or do they already have that? They were in front?
Not on a, not ARB on a six-foot, six-foot's allowed.
Not in your front. If it were front, you're.
Four foot in the front.
Four feet in front, six on the sides and rear, you can have as of right, other than the fact that it's within jurisdiction of wetlands.
That's in the rear.
Yeah.
Right, that's the right rear front.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the ARB would still call the front yard the street side, even regardless of the oceanfrontness of it. Has to do with, you know, view from the road and things like that. Doesn't really have to do with, with wetlands or setbacks or things like that.
Any other questions, board members?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody in the public would like to address this application? Matt, anybody online?
Standby please.
And this is Matt Chapman calling from LTV, making sure all lines are clear, which they are. And you do have one additional caller on the line, so stand by for that caller, please. Thank you.
Hello caller, are you here for this application?
Standby, standby. Caller 6223, you are alive.
Caller, are you here for this application?
Apparently not because they just hung up. Please keep going.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Do you have any closing remarks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In terms of what, you know, Tyler said about the, about the precedent setting for this, I mean, I think, you know, again, you have, it is a somewhat unique situation, but I think that the closer comparison would probably be with the, with the historic building that he, that he referred to. Because there, you know, there's no question this thing, you know, we don't know how far back it goes, but the framing and the, and the structure of it, it'll, you know, are, you know, in fact, we, I would say historic. So I think in this situation, and particularly taking into consideration the fact that the, you know, I think these, these property owners have been very conscientious about, you know, about trying to, you know, preserve these structures. And they've obviously taken, you know, a good deal of time and expense to do not only this application, but also all the work that was necessary to move the other structure across the, you know, across onto the, under the farm field. I, I think it's distinguishable. The fence is where the fence is because the fence has always been there as far as we can, as far as we can tell. It's been there for, you know, for many, many years. So rather than move it around or do something else with it, we just thought, well, we'll, you know, we'll leave it and make it a little bit taller. It does provide a, you know, a buffer in the, in the dune to keep people from coming up from the beach and obviously to keep people on the landward side from, you know, tromping down through there and, you know, going through those wetlands that, that separate the two. So other than that, I'm, I have nothing else.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, I make a motion in the application of Hampton Wyatt at 10 Tyson Lane, East Hampton Suffolk, task map number 300-189-67.2 to close the public hearing and the record.
Second?
I concur.
Thank you. Next, we have John and Karen Wesson at 24 Washington Drive in Montauk, task map numbers 300-71-2-1.2. The size and location is 48,626 square feet at 24 Washington Drive in Montauk. The description is to renovate and construct 1,658 square foot additions to a 2,000 square foot, 2,220 square foot two-story residence, reconstruct a swimming pool and decking and construct two retaining walls on a parcel of land containing freshwater wetlands. The relief assault is a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255420 and variances of two, from 255430, minimal wetland setbacks. The following variances are requested. One, a variance of 31.2 feet to replace pool decking 68.8 feet from a wetland where 100 foot setback is required. Two, a variance of 2.1 feet to construct an addition 97.9 feet from a wetland where 100 foot is required. A variance of 34.6 feet to construct a deck 65.4 feet from a wetland where 100 foot is required and any other relief necessary. The zoning district is a residence, ex flood zone, and the secret class is type two. Counsel, do we have proper affidavit of service and posting?
I reviewed the affidavits of notice and posting and everything appears to be in order and the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you, Ms. Ed.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This parcel has two road frontages. This is on Fairview Lane. That's the posting on Fairview Lane. Next. I'm looking up Fairview Lane here now. My back is to Washington. Next. I'm going to look in. We're going to get several views of this because this is important. Obviously it's the wetlands. There's a beautiful little meadow. The house is up and to the right, but you're going to get an idea that this parcel, when you see the photos, is heavily vegetated and a lot of it is impressive. Next. I'm just looking back. I actually don't know what I'm looking at there. I guess it was just another view of that spot because the vegetation was so thick. Thank you. Next. Now I've gone over to the other posting. This is on Washington. This is posted all the way to the southern edge of the lot. It's a large lot that wraps around the corner. The survey will show that. And we see the garage. The garage is going to be in play here in terms of the discussion and the driveway to the garage. This is near the southern edge of the property. Next. I'm just going to take a look at the garage while we're standing here. Now you can take a look up and see there's a driveway, the garage. And proposed in the, in the application is that they'll create a ramp to the left of the garage you're looking at to gain access to the construction work that is going to take place if this application is to move forward. Next. I'm going to turn around and look across the way. That's exactly opposite. All I've done is at 360 and I'm looking, you get a character of neighborhood. There's a house immediately across from the next. Now I'm going to look out. I've just walked up a little bit. The house is back in there. It's important to note that this is the area where we'll see it again from above where the proposed, in this area is where the proposed septic system, the new IA system is proposed to go. Next. Again, I'm looking my way back road towards the garage. I want to make sure you get an idea of that character of what's here. Next. This is another house. Now I'm over by the, the second driveway. We're going to see going in and this is the neighbor across the way. Next. I'm looking at Washington here. I'm looking north on Washington. Next. I'm going to turn and look south on Washington. Next. Coming up the driveway, this is a driveway that's going to lead up to the, the residence. Next. I get up at the turn in that driveway that you saw and you can see how the residence is set. It's up on the top of this particular portion of the hill. Next. I'm going to take a look my way down across here in a couple of shots. I'm looking down. You get an idea that from the house and the driveway, there's a fairly steep drop off down into what is going to give way to the wetlands. Next. Looking back out. Now this is that same open meadow we saw from Fairview. And now I'm just looking back from that driveway. It's a lush and, and, and attractive environment. Next. These are stairs going down alongside the garage. This is where that ramp will come. I've walked over to the garage and taken a look. You see the garage is to your left. The road is, Washington's out in front. This would be removed and a ramp would go in temporarily to facilitate construction. Next. This is the back of the garage. Now this is actually the second story, right? The garage is on the lower level. So by the time you're up here, this is the second floor of the garage and this is the entrance that faces east. Next. I'm going to take a look here. So one of the things we're going to talk, discuss tonight is, and here described to us by the applicant, is the additions to go on the house. This is looking at what currently there's a, on the, on the west side of the house, this is a second floor deck and overhang. Next. I'm going to take my, I'm going to take a view back around here and you're going to see myself looking back up, down through, across the way. These are two houses across the way from just about where I was standing. I take a look just to get again that character of the neighborhood. You can see it's a well vegetated area. Next. Now I'm around back and I'm looking up at the house here. And this is again, area that we'll be discussing in terms of future construction or potential construction. Next. That was the pool. The pool's coming into play. I'm on the south side of the house looking at the pool. Next. I've gone up to stand. You can see the pool area, that far corner, which I'm going to go out to, is what comes into play in terms of the closest to the wetlands. Next. Now I'm standing in that corner looking down. So again, I'm looking at the meadow. We've looked at it from three different spots. This is from the very nearest corner of the pool, looking down on the wetland. Next. Just looking back from there, if you see I'm in that far corner, you can see what the house structure and everything looks like here, just to put it in perspective. Next. Just looking back down around, we're going to come down here. There's going to be a little area that comes into contention. Next. Think I have a shot of it. This is just steps back up into the house. Next. Oh, okay. Another one looking down the meadow. This is, there's a slight corner in the bottom there. That's the corner of a little landing that is the closest to, and this particular spot is closest to the meadow, to the wetlands. Next. And here's a walkway coming back up and around into the house here that's facing down. Everything to the right here will be cleared because this is where the IA system is to go. And you'll see the clearing line on the survey includes this area. Next. I think that might be it hopefully. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Here we have the agent, Tara.
Tara Burke from Lighthouse Land Planning here on behalf of Karen and John Wesson.
Tara, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you, Member Johan, for those extensive photos. I think it's really helpful to get the setting of the property. This application proposes to renovate and construct a 1,658 square foot addition to a 2,220 square foot two-story residence, reconfigure the swimming pool and decking, and construct two retaining walls on the parcel of land containing freshwater wetland that we spoke about. Natural resource permit, special permit and variances are required. Not to resource, special permit and variances are required. The, there's three variances required. It's 31.2 feet to replace the pool decking 68.8 feet from a wetland, and that is an existing deck that's being replaced, not getting any closer to the wetlands. A second variance of 2.1 feet to construction addition 97.9 feet from the wetlands, and that is on the landward side of the house underneath an existing deck. And then a third variance of 34.6 feet to construct the deck 65.4 feet from the wetlands, and that is to replace an existing gravel walkway within wood framing and make that decking. So I think it's just important to note that all three variances are for existing structures. They're just either being replaced in kind or being renovated into habitable space instead of decking. So the replacement of the pool deck, the existing pool is leaking and in a state of disrepair. They, they need to do something with the pool. So rather than replace the existing vinyl-lined pool in kind, they figured they would reconfigure the area. It's a bit awkward when you walk around it. It's very tight around the pool and they wanted to create a bit more deck space and replace the pool with something sturdier like a gunite pool. This way, they wouldn't have to be back in front of the board for future repairs. The new pool, you can see, is on an angle here. So this is the existing decking line and this gray line is the existing pool. So the new pool is here and the existing deck is staying in the same location. The new pool will actually be 4.1 feet further from the wetland than the existing. And the new pool decking totals 705 square feet, where the existing deck is 985 square feet, which is a reduction of 280 square feet of pool decking. The footprint remains the same, as I said, on the side closest to the wetland. There's no intention of getting any closer to the wetland. The decking is being removed on the south side where the pool is coming in at the angle, hence the reduction in the overall decking. The new deck, the additional decking, is on the north side of the residence, 65.4 feet from the wetland. And that, I submitted a photo of that. That wasn't in those, but this is the gravel with wood framing, that they wanna just replace that and make that decking. So there's like, there's steps that lead down to it and then it's this gravel in the wood and then you step back up and it's very awkward. I was walking through it again today and, you know, your feet are kinda hitting the gravel and then they're hitting the wood and it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So they figured, let's replace that with wood decking. This way, we can just replace deck boards in the future rather than have to supplement the gravel. It'd be a lot cleaner, a lot safer, and it'll just create a better flow. So if we add that decking to the pool decking that we're proposing, which is 705 square feet, this new decking is 265 square feet. So if you add the total of the pool decking and that new section, we're still 15 square feet less than existing decking and not getting any closer to the wetlands than existing structures. The addition is proposed on the south and west side of the house where the existing deck and the covered porch are situated. So that's this area here and here. So you can see the gray outlines here of where the covered porch are. And some of those photos, I think, gave a good perception of where that new habitable space is going to be. Only six square feet of that is within variance jurisdiction and that's just a small corner right here. That is the six. And again, that is currently a covered porch. And the total gross floor area of the residence, should you approve the addition, would be 3,878 square feet when the allowable on a parcel of this size is 5,777 square feet. So it's 2,000 square feet under the allowable GFA as per our code. And I think it's important to note that, you know, they put so much thought into this. I mean, as you know from your record, there was initial application submitted like five years ago or something and we've been brainstorming back and forth how to refine it, what to do. They wound up getting some soil moorings done. They had engineers come in and look at the whole house. And all of that decking on the south and the west side is compromised and there are big concrete footings that go into it. And on this side, on the west side, the concrete footings go into the top of those retaining walls that go down this way here where the existing septic is, right? So the only way to fix the decking is to rip out all of the concrete footings that are in there. They'd have to rip out the retaining walls that are in there to make the deck safe again. So they figured, we're doing all of this. We've got three kids. We'd love to have more room in our house. It's still a four-bedroom house, so we're not increasing the number of bedrooms. They would just like some more space for the kids and the grandkids. So that's kind of how that came about. And then, you know, obviously in discussing the application, we're like, okay, let's replace the septic system. And as part of, you know, as part of this, we're proposing to do that. Now, the existing septic is in that heavily wooded area along Washington Avenue. So that was all cleared at one point in time and regrew. There's a lot of invasive species in there. There might be some native. It's so hard to tell because it's so thick. So the only way to replace the septic is to remove the existing system. The health department doesn't let you leave the old system in to put a new system in. So if we wanna upgrade to the low nitrogen system, which the town now requires, we have to take out that old system. Now, this is 131.7 feet from the wetlands. It's the furthest location possible. I can't think of anywhere, I mean, we'd have to open that up to, to put the septic in any, to take the old septic out. Now, one thing that wasn't in the application, which I spoke to a couple of the neighbors, which was actually really helpful, that the Westons have intended on doing all along but wasn't shown in the submission, is that area is proposed to be cleared, which you can see here is the clearing line, right? And they're still within their allowable clearing. The, I know I put it in the memo, but the allowable clearing, I think, is 20,444 and the proposed clearing is 17,830. So they're within the allowable clearing restrictions, but they intend to replant that area. That is not going to remain grass. They intend on putting native species in there. They love the buccala character of the neighborhood. They love the vegetation. That's one of the reasons they brought the street. They think the wetland's beautiful. They really are good stewards of the land and they intend to revegetate all along Washington and fill that in as much as they can with native species. So, you know, if you so choose, we're happy to submit a revegetation plan for that area, you know, as supplemental information after the hearing.
Could you just point that out on the survey again? Were there re-vegging?
This area here is where the new septic is going. So they would certainly plant along here and up in here, nearly as far as they can. They do have the Laurel Group retained for the project and I spoke to Devin Zaccardi from the Laurel Group today and just to confirm that that's all in the works and he said, absolutely, you know, no problem. We can submit that information. And then I submitted, I don't think I need to go through them now unless you'd like me to, but I did submit the variance standards and, you know, how we think we comply with those in writing, for your record.
So with the, you didn't submit anything for revegetation yet?
No.
Your proposed clearing of 17,830 is what, includes that revegetation?
No. So that's what's on this, those are the numbers taken from the survey.
So we will be opening, leaving the record open for you to submit?
For to submit a revegetation plan, yeah.
And do you have any idea approximately how much that is?
Well, I would say this is 1,600, oh no, because that's GFA. So 20 by 40, so 30 by 40, right? Yeah, it's about, about 2,000 square feet.
2,000 more.
Tara, how do you feel about the TAM suggestion that, in terms of the scenic easement, that you expand it? Did you see that?
Oh, they're fine with that.
Around the wet?
We sort of, we expected to have to expand the scenic easement. They have, that's the reason they bought the property, is because they love that view of that beautifully pristine wetland. So they have no problem expanding that scenic easement. I think the, the, because it was once and then you can see how it was expanded, right? Scenic easement B, that's 15 feet and I think if you go another 15, you know, that, that can stay within the, the room to replace the board. They would have no problem doing that.
Thank you.
In terms of, there's a couple of items in the building protocols I just want to touch on. One is that it's a tough site for you to do any parking at. Now, because of the slopes, it's not as if the area that's gonna be cleared for the septic was, is now suggested to allow for storage of materials and soils before the septic goes in. So the excavation that takes place around the pool and things like that, is any extra materials. There's also a reference in, in the one that was prepared by the architectural firm, that there'll be no significant change in grade and you expect that there'll be very little material added to that slope, right? But saying, that's, that's what's in here now. We're always concerned about what happens to the native grade. So the native grade here, you're telling us that we're not gonna see that changed.
Well, there is a grading plan in there. So there are...
And the grading plan does show a little bit of a change and I see that, that's acceptable. What I'm concerned about now is in the TF Engineering under access and parking, it says that there'll be, parking will be provided up to six vehicles and at no time will construction vehicles be parked on Washington. That's very ambitious and optimistic. I think that during construction, there's gonna be more than six vehicles there and very often we wonder who is the contractor and what can we do about talking about keeping Washington from being blocked in traffic. So this is part of the relationship to the neighborhood we have to consider. So when I look at this site, many sites, we can say there's a temporary area that could be used for parking. You don't really have this yet. You have the driveway that comes up to the house, which one of your drawings, your site plan drawing shows four or five cars there. I can imagine six there, but that's still part of the construction site. I think this is difficult here. So one of the things is, under this protocol, is there's gonna be incumbent on you to figure a way to get some more parking at the garage or someplace there because I see this problem in a narrow road of eight vehicles out there when they're delivering materials. And it does say, there's a note saying that when the larger construction and concrete is being delivered, and we understand that. This is a tough site for this.
Absolutely, and...
We don't, excuse me, we don't have a builder.
I'm sorry?
You haven't chosen a builder yet. There's no contractor chosen for this.
Not as far as I'm aware of.
All right, so part of...
But they do have the Laurel Group on and, but I don't, I don't think they've chosen a contractor yet. But that being said, I did speak with the homeowner. She's very friendly with the neighbors and has a really good relationship with several of them. One of them who lives nearby, she lets him park his car in her garage when he's not here in the winter. She has said that they have no intention of starting in the summer. They'd like to start in the fall as soon as he, he lives across the street. So she said they wanna start right when, in the fall, when he leaves. They are, I mean, I know this, you know, I could say this at any point, but they really are lovely people and they're very concerned about keeping the peace in the neighborhood. So, I mean, that's gonna come down to an enforcement issue, right? With the building department and with code enforcement and with their contractor. It'll certainly be tricky. Is this the only tricky neighborhood in Montauk that has had construction? You know, there, it becomes incredibly inconvenient for the contractors to have to juggle, but it, they can do that.
Something's gonna have to happen to protect the neighborhood. The second thing, there was a note here, you're saying that construction was starting in the fall and will be done in the spring. That's the optimistic, optimistic point of view. There was a note here about taking two months, which is unrealistic, but you're saying that basically you're looking for winter constructions who are not gonna be talking about an awful lot there in the summer, right? If it all goes well.
Yeah, she has no intentions of, you know, upsetting the whole neighborhood where she lives and intends to spend quite a substantial part of her life there, so.
Any other questions?
Oh, did you want to go ahead? Okay. So just again, coming back to the clearing.
Sure.
So the 17,830 we just established doesn't include perhaps another 2,000 of re-veg, but during the course of construction, is, is that 17,830 gonna be more than that?
No.
Okay, so there wasn't...
No, we wouldn't have permission to do that, yeah.
That's question number one. Is there, what, what is, is there living space in the top story of the garage?
There's habitable space in there, yeah, and that was CO'd. I think it's in the TAM.
Right. So does that count to GFA? Shouldn't that be GFA? Is that part of your total GFA?
So anything, well, in today's code, anything over 600 square feet of the detached structure would count, right?
Well, sorry, if, if there's habitable space in it, it would count, I think, to the overall GFA. So was that, that's 600, is it 600 at the top?
I don't know how many square feet it is offhand, but I would assume it's counted in. I mean, those are the numbers I got from the architect.
Okay. And then this, this house was built, when?
1980, something.
So was it, was it pre-existing non-conforming to wetland setback when it was built? Like, I'm looking at that northeast corner.
Andy might actually be able to, because he handled the permits for the prior owner. So you might know the answer to that one, right?
I was planning on being very brief remarks, but I can't tell you. I know this house very well. This was a house owned by my close friend, Mike Valentino. When I say close friend, this was the first house I ever took my newborn baby outside of the house. My son Truman sat on that kitchen table upstairs, so I'm very familiar with the house. The house is built about 1980. I think Mike bought it sometime in the 90s. It was not, there, there were no wetland setbacks in 1980.
That's why I'm saying it would be pre-existing.
Yeah, so it's, you know, unusual lot even. I remember the first time I looked at it, I said, hey, Mike, you know, this is unusual property that you, you own because of the, the kettle hole and then the way the driveway came in. I also know that the owner now, Karen Weston, happens to be one of my very close friends, dermatologist, and everybody says she's a great dermatologist. I think we should get her to move out here in any event. I did handle the garage application for Mike and at the time, this is a very small house. I mean, it's 2,200 square feet. It was, it's very tiny, even to your eyes, because when you go upstairs, there's a bedroom and there's not a whole lot of living space. Part of the reason we proposed the garage, it was not ideal. I don't think Mike even liked it. It was proposed in that location because A, it conformed to zoning setbacks and everything. It was allowable. I think we need an NRSP, but it, it well complied with all the setbacks and it provided him with a little bit more space to store things. So the garage, I think it's 400 square feet at the base and a 200 square feet storage slash, I think he was using it for a home office at the time. So whether or not that counts as habitable, I don't know, but it is 600 square feet in total. I remember that from the time and it was CO'd by the town. When Mike did own the house, we explored a lot of options on this house and all the options pretty much follow the same formula we're doing here, is if you wanna retain the house, you have to build all your additions on the south side of the residence away from the wetlands. And at the time, I think the wetland line, I don't know if it's changed or not, but I think that would have been 100% conforming. I think tonight it's six square feet of it is non-conforming, but that was the alternative here. So, and it's not an attractive alternative for, at least for Mike. It seemed like it was gonna be a lot of work to achieve a very small benefit to the house. However, it is a lovely house and we did consider it. I think Karen Weston looked at the same, you know, that's where these ideas came from. It's like, oh, we always thought about doing this and she has the architectural plans that show how they can make it work for her. You know, one thing I remember from the last time I was in front of the zoning board is, yeah, this is a very well-vegetated site. It's not pristine and the, you know, even if you look at those photos, there's a lot of mile-a-minute vine and I saw some pampas grass. However, it's always been the intent and the stewardship of this property is everything to the north of their clearing line stays completely as it's, as, you know, you know, let nature run its course and that's always been the case. As a matter of fact, you can't even walk, there's a Belgian block boundary there. You can't even walk out of that area and never have been able, you know, I've known this site for 15 or 20 years and you cannot, you could never step out into that area and never would want to, basically. I think the closest you can get to that kettle hole is if you go up at the end of, what is it? Washington Drive and you can walk in that way. But other than that, that's still, you know, what I wanted to add to the conversation tonight.
I'm sorry, can I just leave the loop with Andy on the question I asked about, the house was built before wetland, official wetland setbacks, right? But it was, it would, it was not built with further than 100. I'm getting a little confused about the rule where you can expand something that's pre-existing, non-conforming.
In variance jurisdiction, you're limited to the 50% expansion.
Right.
However, six square feet of this is being expanded in variance jurisdiction, far less than 50% of the house, everything else conforms to the setbacks.
Right, okay, thank you, I just, I knew I was missing something.
Thank you, any other questions?
I have no, Tara getting nothing?
Tara, come on up.
Yeah, well, that's the property too, and it is beautiful. And actually, it's got a great animal habitat, birds. But, I just want to clarify, rerun by it. You're going to take out the old septic, they're going to put in the OWS system in that same area, retaining walls, and then is that just going to be left to be naturalized?
No, they're going to re-vegetate it.
They are going to re-vegetate.
Yeah, there's blue stem, lots of native shrubs, yeah. They've got a whole bunch of things in the works on a re-vedge plan that they were using internally. And I said, hey, let's submit this to the board. If you have intentions of doing this, we should absolutely let them know.
And then, just that little, the gravel and the wood walkway thing, that's the same, that hasn't changed.
No, that was.
Same variance that existed.
Yeah, I think it's in the TAM here, yeah. That actually said it's 62 feet and we're 64 and change, 65.4.
The survey shows 60, yes, 65.4 from it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Thank you, Tara.
Thank you.
World premiere of Zach.
Good evening, Board.
How are you?
Jake Kushner with the Planning Department.
Zach, how are you? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. So, I think we got a pretty good overview of the project. I'll speak a little bit here on the environmental area here. So, the wetlands on the parcel are on the northern half of the parcel. They're part of a larger system of interconnected wetlands, kettle holes and some smaller wetlands. It was likely once connected to the wetland to the east there. They are classified as a Class 1 wetland by the DEC. Those are considered wetlands of the highest quality. They perform benefits like attenuation of stormwater, buffering of pollutants and then habitat for flora and fauna. There is some disturbance around the wetlands and some invasives as well. As for the project, the GFA, building coverage, total coverage, clearing all remain within the maximums allowed. Most of the improvements are proposed on the southern and western sides of the building, which are probably the most conforming locations relative to the wetland setbacks, farthest removed. The small deck extension is proposed in an area where there is an improved surface already existing. And the pool decking reconfiguration pushes the pool further from the wetland, which is a benefit. So, the Planning Department doesn't have any major recommendations. The upgraded IA system is beneficial improvement to the property and can help prevent, you know, future impacts to the wetland. The construction protocol has guidelines for silt fencing to prevent sedimentation of the wetlands during construction, which is big. It does state that that fencing will remain in place till the area is stabilized. The construction protocol also, again, mentions re-vegetating all disturbed areas. And then, that, the parcel does have that scenic easement, which we just discussed, could be extended. So, beyond those mitigation measures, the Planning Department does not have any further recommendations. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for? No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you. Anybody in the public like to address this application? Come on up. Remind the public, the public comment is limited to three minutes. Give it to the mic, please.
My name is Russell Stein, I live at 19 Washington Drive.
Are you an attorney?
Montauk, New York.
Are you an attorney?
No.
You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, and I would do that even if I was still an attorney. Basically, I loved your photo presentation. You penetrated the property more than most of us who live on Washington Drive. But you did leave me out. You didn't show my house. My house is directly in front of the driveway to the little garage, okay? When you come down that driveway with the pickleball court on the pavement, you are standing at my front door, okay? So, the pictures you did show were from the main house. And then you look over and you see two, an aircraft carrier and another big one and another big one. But the little, there are two little ones. And I spent 20 minutes just now trying to find a picture of them, I can't, even though I've taken hundreds. But basically, what you have is two 1944 bungalows. That's what, they stood on the street alone till 1977, when the first house was built on the hill next to mine, the aircraft carrier, we call it. So, in any event, this is a very significant project. And why do I know that? Because I've lived there 54 years. And during those 54 years, I have lived during seven builds of new giant houses and/or restoration, or, you know, refurbishments projects. The average project took over two years and, excuse me, and result, when it happens, Washington Drive, let me back up one second. Washington Drive is a very stressed drive. If you ask the highways people in Montauk, they know this. People are now driving 60 up and down it because it's the number one way to 250 houses. Kenny Rousell sends all of his dump trucks up and down that road all year long, no matter where he's working in the Mira development. It's insane, he has six other entrances on the old highway, he doesn't use any of them. He uses Washington. Why? Because it's the first road when you come out of the village, you know, or Navy Road where your trucks are parked, it's the first ride. So, they do that and then they take a big circuitous route to get to half of the things they're doing. So, it's very busy. Also, all the big new houses need landscaping and the trucks are all parked on, think Further Lane, it's exactly the same, it has, you know, landscaping trucks on it all summer long, sometimes taking away one lane, sometimes taking away both lanes. And now, I park on the shoulder across from my house. I've never had, it's a 40-foot lot and it has no room for a driveway. And the one next door is essentially the same. And so, my car is across the street and yes, the Westons have been terrific neighbors to me. And they even said, you know, it's an old 25-year-old leaky car and Karen said one day, why aren't you in our empty garage when it rains? Okay, these are good people, I'm not here to give them any kind of a hard time. But what I am asking this Board is to think about the mess that is on Washington Drive now and getting worse and worse and worse. And when this proposal first came up, I didn't give it much thought. What I heard was all on the other side, it was a pool renovation and so forth. Now, it's on the west side, the revision this year, there's going to be new habitable space on the Washington Drive side. And the giant jungle that we all love is going to have to go for the new septic and hopefully, the Westons will replant something that looks a little like it. But, so that's the story with Washington Drive. It's very difficult, very dangerous too, because now there are strollers and kids and bicyclists all summer long and the entrance onto the old highway is blind in both directions. So, people come around the corner and there's a big contractor's truck there. So, what you're going to have, my feeling is, I'll leave you with this. Having lived through the eight houses that were already, that are done, this will be the eighth that are done in the 40, for 54 years I've been there. The average project took, wipes out, as I say to Karen, wipes out two summers, all right? If you live there and you're paying your taxes and you'd like to open your school windows or sit on the front lawn, you can't, all right? While these things are under construction, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, all summer, all year. Now, I understand they're proposing not to do anything in the summer, at least anyway, till September. My summer is now September, October. But, the point is that it won't be done in 10 months unless there are some kind of super fantastic, you're going to have.
You're going to be wrapping this up because we've got a long night.
Okay, you're going to have trucks from the, you know, Riverhead Lumber Supply and all that kind of thing parked there. I will have nowhere left to park, I will not be able to park across the street. And their driveway and other areas near there won't, it'll be a new road. They're proposing a new road. So, I'm saying to you that the whole project is a good idea, but the parts that impact Washington Drive, I wish it would look very strongly at. That's all, make sure they don't.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else would like to address this application? Matt, anybody online?
Yes, please stand by. And last four digits, 8999, you are live.
Caller, are you here for this application?
No, I'm not.
Okay, thank you. So, we're going to have to leave the record open for planting plan? For, that's going to be important to us because we need to know how much.
Certainly, and, you know, just so, for the members of the Board, Russell Stein was the original town attorney during the rezoning and is sort of a legend of zoning practice out here. When I first started at the town, he was the person we've always looked up and emulated and would still call him for advice today. So, I wanted to make that clear, that he was an attorney and a very good one. I also did want to point out that I think the biggest concern here comes down to the construction protocol. And in the past, I remember the Board, if, you know, when you have a site like this, that parking access needs to be regulated, we don't have a contractor. I wish I was standing up here with my friend Jimmy Kim from Men at Work Construction. This probably isn't even in the scope of what they would do. However, I think it would be a good idea, the Board could suggest that any contractor selected must sign the application and return it to the zoning board before, as part of their notice of commencement or something, just so that, hey, every, you know, we can put a lot on tariff shoulders, but contractors are a difficult bunch, as I'm sure Roy can attest to. But, you know, we can guide them as much as we can, but we want to make darn sure that they know exactly what they are agreeing to before they operate on any site that the zoning board has jurisdiction over.
Thank you. How much time do you need? We're going to find out how much, it's going to stay open. So, how much time do you need to keep open?
I'd say 14 days for us to submit the re-vegetation plan. And I don't object to Mr. Stein submitting whatever he would like to submit.
Well, can we just get from Jake, if it's not in there already? I didn't see it, the existing conditions memo, if one was done into the public hearing file online?
Sure.
Thank you, while the record's open. Sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have a motion? Until October 14th, or 13th. Yeah, okay. We don't have a hearing, we don't have a hearing that night.
No.
Do we? No, that's Columbus Day. Okay, we'll just keep it up to the 14th anyway. Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
For written comment only.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Then in the matter, an application of John and Karen Weston, 24 Washington Drive, Montauk Suffolk Tax Map 300-71-2-1.2. I want to make a motion to close the public hearing at this time, but leave the public record open for 14 days until October 14th to allow for the submission of a landscape plan.
Second. Concur.
Concur, thank you.
Before you read the next application, Mr. Chair, I will be recusing myself from the application.
Come on up, John. John? Welcome, John. The next application is Anna Kenger at 60 Osprey Road, Amagansett. Suffolk Tax Map number 300-131-7-3. The size and location is 7,552 square feet at 60 Osprey Road, Montauk on the Sea, Section A Lot 115, Map Number 2438, Amagansett. The description is to construct 831 square foot of first and second story additions, approximately 200 square foot roof deck, 100 square foot roof, first floor deck, new stairs, entry upgrade, entry, upgrade the existing sanitary system and to clear approximately 1,000 square feet of vegetation outside of the town's pyramid regulations in greater than the maximum allowable height on a parcel of land within dunes, dune land and beach vegetation. The relief salt is a natural resource, a special purpose pursuant to 255-420 of the East Hampton Town. And three variances are required for this application. Variances are approximately 7.25 feet and 10.3 feet are required from 255-1172D of the Town Code in order to construct a proposed addition 7.25 feet and 10.3 feet outside of the town's pyramid regulations along the western and eastern property lines, respectively. One variance of 1.5 feet is required from 255-1110 of the Town Code to allow the addition to be constructed 26.5 feet in height above grade where 25 feet is maximum allowable for a flat roof and any other relief necessary. The zoning district is B Residence AE Flood Zone, elevation 10 and the secret class is Type 2. Counsel, do we have a proper affidavit of service?
Posting. Yeah, let me, sorry, one second, I just want to double check. They don't have them printed out for me, but just give me one minute. Yeah, I reviewed the affidavits and notice and posting and everything seems to be in order.
Thank you. John, your report?
Yep, I'm the lead. I visited the property yesterday and this is the notice out on Osprey. Next, please Tyler. This is looking across Osprey South at the front of the house. Next, please. This is the house to the immediate west. I think the address is 56 Osprey. Next, please. This is north across the street, I think that's 55 Osprey. Next. This is the west side of the house looking south. Next, please. This is in the backyard looking southwest. That's the dune area directly behind the back of the house. Next, please. This is turning around and looking north at the back of the house, standing in that, the dune. Next. This is looking to the northeast, still from the backyard. Next, please. This is looking to the southwest, shows the house. You can see the angled roof on the right is 56 Osprey. Next, please. This is on the deck looking east. Next. On the deck looking pretty much due south. Next. And on the deck looking due west, and I think that's it.
Thank you. Diane? How are you, Diane?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board. My name's Diane LeBarriere. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Anna Kenger, Jordan LeBarriere, PC, 257 Pancoa Road, East Hampton, New York. As you may recall, we were here about a year ago with an application and request for variances. Since then, we went back to, the applicant went back to the drawing board, mostly based on the comments submitted by the department and also by the members. And the application has since been significantly reduced so as to permit the improvements that are sought by the applicant while minimizing the impacts on the environment and the surrounding area. The notables with regard to the reduction pertain mostly to removal of decking, reduction of clearing and making those improvements so that the majority of the improvements are, although the improvements are on the south side, they're also in the north and most of them are within the, I think all of them are within the existing non-conformity. In the technical analysis memorandum, I saw some somewhat positive comments from Mr. Borisak. It seemed that he had acknowledged that the revisions and the modifications that were made since the initial application seemed favorable. And I can go into those specifically. First, we reduced the number of variances from six to three. We reduced the proposed height, reduced the decking, removed the deck railing and reduced the clearing by 550 square feet. I recall when we were previously before the Board, the Board was very concerned about the impacts of the proposal on the dune area. We went to great lengths to ensure that the improvements that are sought and the expansion that is sought are the minimal necessary in order to provide the additional space in the gross floor area, although, albeit within the permitted gross floor area. in the gross floor area, although, albeit within the permitted gross floor area, within the gross floor area that is permitted, and also just to accommodate the applicant's desire to have greater space, their grandparents as well, seeking additional space so that everybody can be comfortably within the residence, the kids, grandkids, et cetera. So the, the application has been significantly scaled back. The impacts on the, with regards to the decking and the dune area are minimal. And I think that the, I think the technical analysis memorandum was accurate with regard to the modifications that have been made. And like I said, I think they acknowledged the improvements in the, in the proposal, specifically addressing the comments that were submitted by the architect, which I believe are also submitted to Chairman Zalina and the zoning board of appeals this afternoon. She addresses specifically, from an architectural standpoint, some of the issues that were raised by Mr. Borsak, indicating that the existing height encroaches beyond the pyramid by 20 foot six inches. Our proposal is 10 foot six inches less than the existing. The proposed stair to the deck on the south side of the residence encroaches one foot. The existing stair encroaches three feet. The existing stair area beyond the required setback is 22 plus or minus square feet. The proposed is three and a half plus or minus square feet. We're increasing the distance and improving conditions to the house to the south. The height relief we are seeking is six feet less than what was existing, than what is existing. We are matching the plate height on the north elevation, and the ceiling height will be seven feet six inches. Also worth mentioning is, previously when we came before this board, we had indicated that we were making an application to the Department of Health Services to upgrade the septic system. That minor variance was approved by the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. The only thing left to do is to file a covenant to wherein the owners are going to agree that the driveway will remain permeable. And so, of course, adding the, upgrading the septic system to load nitrogen also helps to mitigate any of the environmental impact. In terms of the proposal that's currently before the board, it is well within the, the nature of the surrounding area, greatly reduces any potential adverse environmental impacts. And, oh, again, also with regard to landscaping, we're proposing to add native vegetation to the northerly portion of the property as a mitigative effort to increase the amount of native vegetation, just to mitigate the very minimal amount of clearing that's proposed on the south side. And I think that, I think that's all the comments that I have, unless the board has any questions.
Any questions, board members?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
So the current residence violates pyramid regulations.
It's a pre-existing nonconforming.
Pre-existing nonconforming. By how much?
Well, we went through it. So the existing height encroaches beyond the pyramid by 20 feet six inches. Our proposal for the second story addition is 10 feet six inches less than the existing.
Pyramid violation, but I'm talking about heights.
Oh, the existing height is, I think it's 26 and a half square, 26 and a half, 26.5?
But that's a pitched roof.
I'm sorry, for flat. It's a flat roof.
Is there an existing flat that exceeds, exceeds the height?
Well, the current roof's pitched, isn't it?
No, no, no. Our, our current roof is, oh, this, the current roof, well, actually, you know what? I'm not the architect, but we do have the architects on the, on the phone.
The point is, we talked, you said, you said that the addition is lower from the existing house, but the existing house is a pitched roof, so that has a higher, it's what, 32? I think it is, 32.
Correct. I think that the point.
You're proposing a flat roof, so to relate it to a pitched roof is sort of misleading, I think. I don't mean to use the word misleading, I'm trying to figure it out, but it's.
It's apples and oranges, I think is what you're saying.
Apples and oranges.
Yeah. So to the extent that the architect submitted those comments to the board and included that analysis, I think I'd like to bring her in. She's, I believe she's on hold.
Okay. Before you do that, did you say that she submitted things today?
She did.
Today?
Yes. I have copies of those two to submit here to make part of the record.
If you want to hand them, so we make sure we have.
Sure, yep.
I think I have. It's dated today.
I also have copies of correspondence that I submitted as well for the board.
You submitted this letter today, September 30th?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
I believe the board got digital copies of that this afternoon as well.
I, I've made copies.
On the elevation, the bottom elevation, that's the side view of the addition, right? So the deck below, is that existing or?
There is an existing deck, yes. There are two.
Expanding that deck.
Exactly. They're bumping out the addition, so they're adding GFA, and then they're pushing the, the deck out to accommodate that expansion.
But, you know, I think they're adding 100 square feet to that rear deck as well.
Correct. In, in the area, I believe there's a spiral staircase that's, that's proposed, just to allow for area to walk around that spiral staircase. Again, with regard to the dune vegetation, I included pictures of where that proposed deck, where that deck is proposed in the vicinity. It's mostly sand in that vicinity. We've been, you know, we've been very conscientious in terms of the considerations that we've made for that, for that deck and for, you know, to ensure that there's very limited clearing on the south side.
So you're, I mean, just before we get the architect on the phone, regarding the various requests, you're asking, you're increasing nonconformities, it appears. And I'm trying to, I'm struggling with the uniqueness of this request, other than hearing that it's, the owner, you know, desires it. But I, what's the uniqueness because to allow, if you were to have an empty lot, a constraint lot like this, that's empty, you would have to conform to all, all zoning. But now you have a nonconforming, and we're, we're just pushing it out more. But I don't understand, I'm struggling with trying to find the uniqueness, because if we're going to approve this, it has to have a unique character. And we're going to, you know, it's, I'm struggling with it.
Well, I mean, there is, first of all, there is precedent with regard to increasing GFA, especially when you look at that looming Schaeffetz structure that's on, you know, to the west of this premises. So, so we have, you know, we have precedence there. And then with regards, there is, you know, there is an existing nonconformity that, you know, we are trying to work with that is unique to this particular property and, you know, to these circumstances. So they are, you know, they are proposing the minimum necessary to work within the existing nonconformity in order to increase GFA, not to the maximum, still below what's permitted, not clearing to the maximum, still way below what's permitted. 100% is permitted, we're, you know, up to 48%. So the, you know, the ask is essentially to allow the applicant to increase the GFA in an, in a, you know, in a, for this particular property that has unique nonconformities, working within that structure in a way that's, that conforms with the surrounding area, and certainly conforms with the surrounding area and falls within the precedent-setting structure to the west of the property.
Okay. Any questions?
The nonconformity is not decreasing. There's still some additional nonconformity.
Yes.
The minimum necessary to increase the GFA. We're only looking for 130 square feet, 830 square feet essentially. And, you know, I believe it's about 2,350 square feet of GFA that's permitted, and we're about, you know, 100 square feet under that.
You're going for the maximum, yeah.
Well, we're not maxing it out. We're still going below.
Very close.
One thing I'm not clear about is why removing the existing first floor deck and adding 100 square foot deck in the rear requires clearing 1,000 square feet of vegetation? I see the green, supposed additional clearing, and just not sure why that needs to happen in the, in the backyard and, and the, that would be the west side.
I also have the landscape designer on the phone as well, along with the architect, who have been working very closely with the owners, who are also on the, on the phone to comment as to the, the clearing, which is still well below the permissible clearing, but understood as to the, as to the south side, and also, you know, to explain why it is that they're seeking that additional decking on the south side.
What's the date on that document that's up on the screen?
This one is March 2025, I believe. Yeah, March 14th, 2025.
Okay, if you want to get somebody else, if you want to, you know, see your.
Sure, yes. I don't know how we get to the people.
Okay, I have, I have a question, and this is Matt from LTV. I have three callers. Do we happen to have a last name of the architect?
Dahlheimer, Lizbeth Dahlheimer.
Perfect. I will mute them right now. And 6223, you are live.
Good evening. This is Lizbeth Dahlheimer.
Hi. Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I would just like to address the, the height variance we're requesting on the north side of the building. That height, we're matching the existing plate height of the house, and it's only allowing a 7 feet 6 inches in height for that area. So we're really not, you know, like going above and beyond. The reason for that height is specifically because of the existing height of the building, of the plate height, like I mentioned, and really the minimum that we could really go for a bedroom for the height.
Any other questions? Board members?
No, I'm fine.
No, thank you.
Lizbeth, I thought there was also a question as to the decking and why it is that we're requesting the additional 100 square feet of decking on the first floor.
We are proposing it, it's, since, you know, it's a dune area, they're not going to be utilizing grade at all, and so we're trying to maximize the area without touching the plantation, you know, the plantings. And so I felt that that was a minimal amount of decking to add for the, you know, they, they have two new grandchildren and, you know, trying to have room for their family. We've also, the stair that we're proposing to get up to that first floor deck is considerably, I know Diane read my statement to the board, but the, right now, the existing stair is much more forward and encroaches a great deal more than what we are proposing. I, I did try to be very respectful of the site and at the same time provide what my clients needed. And as far as if, you know, what's unique about this property, the house is skewed on the property. If we were to knock it down and build a new house, obviously it would conform more with the direction of the property. That, that is unique to this property.
Okay. No other questions?
No.
No, thank you.
And I believe there was a question for Tom Muse, Muse Design, who is also on the phone with regard to.
Can you let Tom in, please?
Yep, stand, standby, please. And caller 1842, you are live.
Hey, Tom?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Thomas Muse, 27 Hopkins Avenue, Montauk, New York.
Yeah, Tom, do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Tom, I think there was a question about why, why is there, from?
Yeah, my question is about why is it necessary to clear 1,000 square feet of vegetation, especially on the west side and on the south side?
On the south side, there's a, if you, I don't know if you can bring up the landscape site plan, if that's possible, to bring it up to the board.
We have it looking at it. We're looking at it.
They have it up, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and the purple line is showing the edge of proposed clearing, and then there's the dark kind of cloud line, that's the existing clearing. So there is an edge of proposed clearing to allow, you know, basically access to really construction there. There's a project limiting fence that is proposed, and that project limiting fence shows the, is representing basically the northern line of the bearberry dam that's there, which is, you know, endemic dune vegetation. North of that limiting fence, and inside of that limiting fence is just the landscape, escanthus grasses and a few, a few clumps of bayberry and stuff like that, non-significant landscape vegetation that will be, you know, possibly impacted by the additional deck and construction in the back there. So the, the, the opportunity for revegetation right up to that deck is there. It's not represented there, but there's a few 100 square feet of clearing on that south side. And then the whole project was moved to the, to the north side for the addition and the sanitary system, and that's where most of the additional clearing is required, to put the sanitary system in, with the distribution trench and the gravel driveway. There is a great reduction in the curbside appeal of the masonry, you know, the, an imp, sorry, a great impact to the curbside on a, on a, on a native vegetation. There's a large apron that's existing there and some driveway along the road fundage that's going to be reduced by native vegetation. You can see that on the north boundary of the property line. The, the cobblestone apron is get, is significantly reduced, and we, you know, plan to do some native plantings there. Those are the reasons for the additional clearing.
Do you plan to revegetate where you can for the, above the IA system and in the construction area in the backyard, the south side?
Yep, there's, we've got some additional planting opportunities once we remove that, you know, massive cobblestone apron on the east and west side of the proposed new apron, which is more of a conventional sized apron. And the, the parking area there is rendered. It's, it's, it's a tight site, and the initial zoning application was with all the improvements and additions to the south of the property, which was going into the dune system. So we've reversed that, and we're protecting a substantial amount of the south, really the whole south side of the property is shown as non-disturbed native vegetation. And that was the whole, the whole effort on this.
John, where on the south, on the south side, where you, John, on the south side where you're, you're saying you're clearing because of the construction, why not re-veg that back to where it should be, closest, closest proximity to the, to? why not re-veg that back to where it should be, closest proximity to the additions?
I don't, I don't have any problem with that at all.
Leaving maybe a four or five foot access around.
Yeah, the building maintenance, yeah, a couple of feet around, yeah.
Excellent, yeah.
Yeah, again, I sent some photos around, and I know you guys have the photos. You'll see the endemic significant, you know, dune vegetation is not close to the building there. It's, it's like I said, where I've shown this project limiting fence, south of that is where the real, the nice native dune vegetation is. North of that is just some scrubby old landscaping that's there. But to re-veg up to, you know, a two or three foot line surrounding there will slightly reduce the requested clearing, and that's something that certainly could be considered. Just make the owners aware of that, see if they sign off on that, and we could modify the proposed vegetation line to show that.
Okay.
Anything else?
Any other? No, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
I'll work back for the planning department again. So the subject property is situated on the south side of Osprey Road in the Napeague area of Amagansett. The application is requesting an NRSP pyramid variances and height variance in order to construct a two-story addition, decking, new entry stair, upgraded sanitary system, and to clear beach vegetation. This property was before the boards locating the Montauk on the Seas subdivision in Napeague. This is areas comprised of smaller lots, which contain dune land habitat and beach vegetation. Of the greatest concern to the board is generally retaining as much of the dune land character on these properties as possible while allowing for appropriate levels of development. The rear of the subject property contains a dune formation that is vegetated with beach heather, beach plum, and bearberry. Some of the proposed clearing in this is in this area of the existing residence, to southeast of the existing residence, although the southern clearing limits have been greatly reduced since the 2023 denied application and are generally, the amount of development at the south of the property has been reduced greatly. So it's really just around that new deck sort of addition, and then a little bit south of the addition for the house, which is over the existing decking for the most part. The subject application is requesting two pyramid variances and a variance for the maximum allowable height for the proposed additions and decking. The proposed additions to the residence require variances from the town's pyramid regulations of over ten feet and seven feet from the eastern and western property lines respectively. The size and shape of the residence on this small non-conforming property make the existing improvements non-conforming to pyramid and maximum height. The existing residence is approximately fourteen feet out of pyramid regulations along the western law line and more than twenty feet along the eastern law line at the peak of the roofs. The proposed flat roof addition will also extend approximately twenty-six and a half feet above the surrounding natural grade, and that's to the, that's on the, on the south side of the lot where a lot sort of, the topography sort of slopes down a little bit away from the, from the, down and away, so that that height variance is really at the far southern end of that and not the entirety of the addition. The parcel directly to the west, fifty-six Osprey, was a subject of multiple ZBA applications requesting pyramid and third-story variances for additions to the residence. That application was originally denied and was subsequently approved in the second application after revisions to the plans in order to reduce the magnitude of those variances. That property was ultimately granted five variances, including one pyramid variance to construct a dormer addition, eight feet, eight and a half inches outside of town pyramid regulations, and also required a third-story variance because that's sort of a strange building. The subject property was, the subject property here in this case was before the board in 2023 for a similar project, which has been scaled back to eliminate some of the variances and reduce others. At that time, the applicant was asking for four pyramid variances, two pyramid variances to construct the proposed addition, eleven point four, two feet, and fourteen point one, two feet outside the pyramid regulations, and the proposed decking, five point oh eight and eight point oh eight feet outside of the town's pyramid regulations on the western and eastern property lines. The decking variances have been eliminated as the proposed decking is first floor and roof decking over a more centrally located second-story addition. The proposed pyramid non-conformities have also both been reduced by approximately four feet on either side of the parcel, still less than what currently exists on the property. The application is also proposing to clear significantly less of the remaining beach vegetation. It has already been discussed. The current proposal will clear approximately two-hundred-and-fifty square feet of vegetation, and I agree that a lot of that is ornamental escanthus and a little bit of bayberry. It's kind of sandy area as well, not as high quality as the bearberry that we really are concerned about at the far south end of that property. The relocation of the bulk of the proposed additions to the north of the residence appears to be an attempt to address some of the board's concerns with the previous application. The proposed eight-hundred-and-thirty-one square feet of additions to the residence on the subject property will increase the gross floor area from an existing one-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-one square feet to a proposed two-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-two square feet, where two-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-five is the maximum allowable at the time the application was submitted. With such large variance requests and nearly maximizing the gross floor area allowance, the board will have to carefully consider how this application meets the variance standards. Are there reasonable alternative designs that could be considered, which would add some additional living space to the residence without need for such large variances and which would limit the impacts to the beach vegetation on the property? The Montauk on the Seas subdivision is an area of town that has been seen many applications in front of the ZBA in recent years for redevelopments or additions to existing properties, many of which are maximizing or nearly maximizing the gross floor area allowances. This level of development may simply not be possible on some of these properties, given the existing conditions, dune land characteristics, and significant variances required. The character of this neighborhood of modest homes with the dune land habitat has been under increasing development pressure, and the board will need to determine if the proposed variances and NRSP are in keeping with that character or if there are better alternatives, which would require less clearing, smaller or no variances, and better fit the constraints of the property. Additionally, the applicants are showing a sanitary system upgrade to a modern IA sanitary system as part of the project. Sanitary system is likely required, but the benefits of an additional low nitrogen sanitary system, although the parcel is not within jurisdiction of any protected wetlands remains. The ZBA should carefully review the application, compare it to the constraints of the property, and what has been included or offered to mitigate those impacts associated with the development, and compare the development of similar properties in the neighborhood to determine if the applicant meets the NRSP and variance standards. And I think I answered any questions that may have been lingering. The clearing line around, that's shown around the decking, I think it's fairly close to probably around five feet, which is sort of standard for the board to allow, you know, room for people to do maintenance for their home. I don't know if much additional revegetation would be necessary, but certainly including anything up to around a five-foot buffer would be appropriate. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Tyler?
Tyler, if I'm understanding, the roof height will exceed the maximum by a foot and a half.
Right.
And if I'm also understanding correctly, the pyramid violations will be reduced.
They will be reduced from.
From the previous application.
From the previous application.
Okay, but this is a new application, new board. I'm looking at this, fresh eyes.
Correct. Yeah, there was an application in 2023. The majority of the additions were on the south side of the house. It cleared significantly more of that, which we had concerns with, and the pyramid variances were greater at that point in time, partially because of the topography and also just the general.
Right. I'm just, I'm considering this as a new application, new board. So the variances are seven and a quarter on the west side and ten, ten point three on the east side.
Right.
Really, what's before us is the NRSP, the height variance, and the pyramid east and west.
Correct.
That's it.
Yep.
Yep. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Tyler. Is there anybody in the public would like to address this application? Matt, is there anybody online?
Yes, we still have one caller, and I will unmute them right now. And eight-nine-nine-nine, you are live.
Caller, are you here about this application?
This is Richard Troyer. I just want to make the phone mention, this is Richard Troyer. I'm counsel to McCangers. I just want to mention that with regard to any vegetation that you think is appropriate, they will approve that, whatever the board feels is appropriate. They will replace vegetation as required. That's not going to be an issue.
Thank you.
Other than that, I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. Okay, thank you. Are we, do we need to, no, we're okay, I think. We'll, we'll, we can condition it on five, within four, five feet, I think. All right. Can we have a motion, John?
Yes, regarding the application of Anna Kenger at sixty Osprey Road, Amagansett, Suffolk County Tax Map three hundred dash one thirty-one dash zero seven dash three. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and the public record.
Concur.
Concur.
Concur. Thank you. Thank you, Diane. Next, we have Wataview three LLC. It's two-thirty-two Westlake Drive in Montauk, Suffolk Tax Map number three hundred dash twelve dash four dash twenty-nine. The size and location is twenty-seven thousand fifty square feet at two-thirty-two Westlake Drive, Montauk Beach Development Core, subdivision number seven, Westlake Residential Section, block one fifty-five, lot six, map number ten twenty-four in Montauk. The description is to allow the removal of existing walkways, wall, and ornamental vegetation located, relocated propane tanks, and to allow a new stone retaining wall, gravel driveway extension, new walkways and associated structures on a parcel land containing tidal wetlands. Relief sought is a natural resources special permit pursuant to two-fifty-five four-twenty of the East Hampton Town, and two variances are required for this application. Variances of seventy-four feet and sixty-eight point five feet are required from two-fifty-five four-thirty of the town code to allow the existing walkways to remain twenty-six feet and existing block wall to remain thirty-one point five feet from tidal wetlands, where a hundred-foot setbacks are required, and any other relief necessary. The zoning district is a residence, ex-flood zone, VE eight flood zone, and the secret class is type two. Counsel, do we have proper affidavit of service and posting?
Yeah, I reviewed the affidavits of notice and posting, and everything seems to be in order, and the board has jurisdiction over this matter.
Thank you. Okay, Ed?
Thank you. This is the posting. You see it on Westlake Drive. The board will be familiar, most of the board, I think, we were all on here for a previous discussion of this parcel. Next. I'm going to look down Westlake here. I'm now looking down towards the harbor. Next. Going to turn and look the other way. I'm looking back up towards twenty-seven. Next. Now I'm standing here with the gates open, and I'm looking, I'm going to walk my way into the property and take a few photos just of the property in general. Next. Looking at a garage that's off to the right here. Continue. Next. The same one I've added. Not keep going. Next. Now I'm standing here looking down. We're going to go up towards the house. There's a walkway leading up to the house from here. This is not the walkway in contention. Next. There's a series walls that were constructed, and they're under, they're now some cinder block or block walls right now that are in incomplete state, or perhaps they're in a complete state, they can tell us. But anyway, next. Let's see another corner here, and this wall is going to now wrap around all the way down towards the water. Next. See a series there. That wall keeps coming. Next. I'm going to see it now. It's leaning its way. You see it, but this is all to the north. It's going to work its way around the house and again down towards Lake Montauk. Next. This is just looking back up into the house. Next. This is a walkway that comes alongside the house, and this is, Lake Montauk is off in the distance. This is a walkway we're going to have a discussion about. Next. Looking out across the pool, Lake Montauk beyond. Next. Looking back, I've got the house in the setting, the house here. You can see that walkway just to your left. That's the end of the walkway that we're going to be discussing. Next. This is a wall that came up at last hearing. I wanted to take a photo of it. This is an older wall. You can see the old concrete. Next. It's a wall that goes, dates back, I don't know when to when, but dates back far enough that it's not in front of us tonight. Next. It has been discussed. Let's get a view of the setting here. We're looking out on Lake Montauk, and you can see there's a buffer there that is largely undisturbed. Next. From there, the walls, the long existing wall, looking back up towards the house. Next. Again, just from standing out in the, beyond the, out in the buffer, right, almost on the edge of Lake Montauk. Next. This is the NRSP section. I'm looking here, I'm looking south here, I guess, yes, south, and this is a property that's got a bulkhead to the right here that's fairly significant. Next. That's the edge of their property. Now I'm going to walk my way up alongside the pool, and you're going to see, we're going to come a little bit further, and that wall is going to be closest to the wetlands, it's going to be on my right. Next. Oh, I'm just looking back across where there's the septic is next. Again, I'm looking for another photo, but this is just looking back across the way. Next. This is the corner. This is where this wall ends. This is the portion that's thirty-one point five feet from wetlands. This made its way from the front along the northern side of the house and dead ends here. There's a little bit of, looks as if it was intended to go further, but this is as far as it's gotten right now. I think that's it. Is that it, Morgan? I was just looking back through this gravel area, looking back up. That's that wall looking back up to the house. Next. I think that's it. This is only because there was so much gravel area, and it was mentioned earlier in one of the previous comments, but that's it.
Thank you. John? How are you, John?
Hi, good evening, John. Target for the applicant. It's a relatively straightforward application. There's this little, as you see on the pictures, there's a retaining wall that was built around the property. It did replace a stacked stone wall that had been dilapidated and was, was no longer serving its function and probably didn't cover the entire area that the new wall does. But the owner and the, or the landscaper felt that because it was going over existing lawn and it was north of the house, the wetlands being, or not, sort of landward of the house, with the wetlands being on the other side of the house, that they could do without a building permit. Of course, it did need a building permit. It also needed a natural resource permit and a variance. The wetland, while it is noticed as being pretty close to well, and it's just that corner on the side of the house, the majority of the wall in question is on the landward side of the house. You'd have the wall, then the house, and then the pool, and then the retaining wall, and then the wetlands. And then, of course, you saw the pictures of the little bluestone steps over, and all this was over existing lawn. So I don't believe anybody thinks there's any environmental detriment from this. The benefit to the applicant, benefit to the applicant was, the reason for the wall was to try to create a little flat area for the parking and just transition from the parking area in the garage to the house in a safer, more organized fashion. Otherwise, you'd have a little bit of a slope. And that was the reason why it was built. Again, no known detriment from building this wall. If anything, arguably, there's probably some benefit from stopping that slope from the driveway area down towards the wetland, between the wall and the vegetation around the wall. So.
How much of the wall is being removed?
No, no portion of the wall is being removed. I was told it's twenty-two inches high, but clearly looks bigger in some sections, higher.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah. It was mostly just.
Question, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I have a question about the condition of the wall. Looks like more work is going to be done.
Yeah, it was, they thought they could do it without a variance, and most of that wall is either outside of a hundred feet or close to a hundred feet.
Notice is to allow the removal of existing walkways, wall, and ornamental vegetation?
I think that's a question for the planning department. I think it was just a complicated, it was complicated in the sense that the stuff was done without a permit, so there was work done. So I think that's the question.
So the wall along the water side, what?
Everything that's there is proposed to remain, and that wall was supposed to have.
So was that there prior, or was that a new wall?
That's a new wall.
So they built that without the, with the NRSP?
Yes, yeah.
Pretty egregious.
Replace the existing wall.
Be clear about which wall you're talking about. You're talking about the one that's down at the waterfront?
Yeah, yeah.
That one, that's an older wall. We took a picture of it. Yeah, that's an older wall.
That's the one built without a building permit?
No, that was not built by them. I'm not going to defend you. I'm just saying the wall that's on the ocean is an older wall. The wall that we're discussing is the one we saw start at the beginning of the house and curl around on the north side, and that was built without the benefit of building permit.
Correct.
So, they built that without the, without NRSP?
Yes, yeah.
Pretty egregious.
Replaced an existing wall.
Be clear about which wall you're talking about. You're talking about the one that's down at the waterfront?
Yeah, yeah.
That one, that's an older wall. We, I took a picture of it. Yeah, that's an older wall.
That's the one built without a building permit?
No, that was not built by them. I'm not going to defend you. I'm just saying the wall that's on the ocean is an older wall. The wall that we're discussing is the one we saw, started at the beginning of the house and curled around on the north side, and that was built without the benefit of building permit.
Correct.
And why you're in front of us now, because you took out an older wall to put this one in.
Thank you.
And some, and some walkways as well.
Yeah, the walkway, the walkway that's shown to the house has always been there. Uh, I think it's a different walkway than what was there.
Yeah.
So, that probably reads, needs natural resource permit or variance. Uh, and the walkway on the side of the house, as you showed in the pictures, those bluestone steps, those were also added with, uh, without a natural, without a variance. And there, there was walls there, um, but we replaced some of the walls with a more modern wall. It is intended to be, uh, there's supposed to be a facade put on, but the stop work order was issued, and they stopped. So, should the variance be granted, they would just put some sort of nice decorative feature on it.
I just wanted to clarify what you said. You said there were stacked, some stacked stone wall that was a bit...
It was dilapidated.
Right, dilapidated. And then you replaced it with this more, right. But I, I don't, I don't know where that stacked. But you said, I think the new wall is much bigger? The same, like, was it in the same place?
Same, same idea. Uh, there's always been that gentle, gentle grade difference between the, the parking area and the, and the water, and so, um, there was always been some sort of attempt to transition from the higher to the lower area. There's always been some, there's a stacked wall there. It was, it was not really there anymore. The house has been developed for 70 years.
Right.
So, at times, it's had a lot of different features, but this, it's just, it's just a, uh, landscape feature.
What is, what is existing? I'm trying to understand what's existing between the pool deck and the seaward side of the pool deck regarding buffer to the, to the water? Is there any buffer there? John, maybe, Morgan, can you pull that up?
There's a cement wall, and then there's, remember, these, these properties all own the underwater land in, in the lake? So, the, uh, the, the survey is showing the meet high water line there, but all the way out to Lake Montauk is owned by the property. Um, so the buffer would be, um, all that area.
Is it a buffer now? That's what I'm, that's what my, I'm trying to say. Morgan, can you try to pull up something on that?
This is that old wall.
So, you got grass coming up to the wall?
Yeah, yeah, that's all, that's all owned by the applicant.
You really don't have a buffer there.
No, that's all, all that, all that, um, is that?
All that in front of us here?
I don't know, I don't know what the tech, uh, all that, all that, all that wetland is owned by the applicant. All, everywhere below that wall is owned by the applicant.
That's, that's, yeah.
There's another photo. Go back a little bit.
Yeah, I understand, but that's, that's the edge of wetlands, right?
Yeah.
So, there's nothing protecting the wetlands. There's, there's grass coming up to that wall. I'm wondering if we can get a buffer there.
There's that wall, there's the grass, and then beyond.
I don't think the, the, the landscape feature...
Grass going up to bulkheads on the waterline, is that cool? So, we, we, we're going to...
I know, but there's absolute, we're talking about a wall on the other side of the house, right? And so, so to remove the lawn is a big ask. What we could do is we could do a cut, we could record a covenant for no, no irrigation, no, um, fertilizers, but...
But that's unenforceable, enforceable. You can't enforce that.
Yeah, the wall is on the other side of the house. So, I mean, it's, uh, you could also say make the house smaller, but I mean, there has to be some sort of rational, reasonable...
I'm talking, I'm talking about between the deck, the pool deck and the retaining wall.
The pool deck is legal, and the pool is legal, and the house is...
I'm saying that, but we have lawn between there. We don't have a buffer protecting the wetlands, and we always look for a buffer, right? We always do. So...
And I, I don't think there's anything wrong with asking for it, but, but I'm asking for a wall on the other side of the house. So, I think there, I think when you ask for mitigation for, the, the perfect example would be if I asked for a side yard variance, you say, hey, put screening up to protect the neighbor. Asking me to remove lawn has no, there's no, there's no nexus between that and, and, and the wall on the other side of the house. So, I understand how you ask. I'm, I'm trying to...
I'll, I'll consider that, but I'm just...
Yeah, that's just my, you know, that's me being, you know, my part of the argument.
Other side of the house, though, and this, the relief requested here, variance is of 74 feet, 68 and a half feet, to allow existing walkways also to remain 26, and the block wall 31.5 feet from the wetlands.
So, the, the wetland in question is to the north?
The TAM is recommending that you create some buffer.
Well, I, when you're talking about that variance, I think you're talking about the portion of the wall that runs down towards Lake Montauk in that corner there, and the wetland in question is on the, there is vegetation between us and the neighbor, and the, the wetland is actually on the neighbor's property, but I'd be willing to, um, offer to remove any lawn in that corner and make it beach grass, but the, the, there's very little lawn on this property, and to, to remove that small area, um, of, when, when, nobody here is saying the wall's going to do any detriment. The wall's not hurting anybody or anything. Um, if, if anything, it's providing some environmental protection because it's creating, it's stopping the flooding from the street and the driveway down into the water. So, should simply say, hey, we think you should remove the lawn. Uh, I, I don't think, you know, my argument would be that that's outside of, of powers.
All right, we're getting here from the planning department on that.
Wait, oh, can I ask one?
Yeah, go for it.
Um, obviously, it's not in this application, but we're on the site, and the pool is, which was like from 1972, is broken, right? So, I, do you ha, are you coming in for replacing that pool, or?
No. I, yeah. I honestly have no idea.
Thank you.
My client's watching. Maybe she'll text me.
What?
My client's watching at home, so maybe she'll text me.
Okay, great. Because it's, it's, I mean, it's broken. It's like...
I don't...
I mean, you've seen it, so, that's why I asked. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for John?
No, I'm good.
Thanks, John. Let's hear from planning.
How are you, Morgan?
Hi, good. How are you, Board? Morgan's sitting for the planning department.
Morgan, do you swear for him to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Uh, this property is within part of Montauk, where there are numerous properties developed prior to the establishment of minimum wetland setbacks. This particular lot has been intensely developed within minimum wetland setbacks, though the only improvements that have occurred within wetland jurisdiction since the inception of NRSP has been window and door replacements and some roof line work, uh, which received an admin NRSP a few years ago, um, in addition to a subject work in need of relief that we're discussing tonight. A stop work order was issued for the construction of the pathways and retaining wall that are in need of variances, and also for other ground disturbance that occurred within wetland jurisdiction. That includes the removal of the structures, so there isn't currently any proposed work on this lot. All the removal of the structures has already happened. That was just included in the scope of work that was submitted when the application was first received by our department. Um, there's, that was with a, a different agent, and now John is the agent on the application. Um, the gravel pathway and stone wall are minor structures, but they are 25 feet and 31 and a half feet from the wetland at their closest points, which are substantial variances. The level of legally existing development within the minimum, minimum wetland setbacks makes the environmental impact of the walkway and stone wall difficult to quantify. Um, however, a way for the environmental conditions of the property to be improved would be some revegetation with, with, you know, beach grass on the water side of the pool since, or within some sort of buffer to the wetland at the closest point, since there is currently sod throughout the entire property, which is not compatible with HPOD standards. Um, I can answer any questions the board may have about the property that is quite, um, there is a bit of a history, so.
You were recommending in your TAM to get a buffer there, too.
Anything is better than what's there right now.
So, um, counsel has said that there's really no nexus to the request, and I'm trying to dig, I'm trying to drill down into that.
When there is such an intense level of development that is legally existing, any additional development should be, you know, looked at pretty closely. Um, you know, if this was proposed, um, I think that we would be having a bit of a different conversation and, 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 you know, not really different, but we would still insist that there be some sort of revegetation. You know, it's 100% pre-existing clearing. Montauk is a compromised water body. Um, any buffer that is better, that is better than what's there is, uh, definitely the opinion of the planning department that would, uh, I think, be warranted.
So, there's an area where you have the, you go through the gate to the back and basically where the pool is.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the area that I was thinking from the TAM that you want to have a buffer.
You know, yeah, it's something, you know, the closest point, it is 25 feet from the well, and that, that is quite a large variance.
You're okay with the walkway staying at that location?
Yeah, the gravel walkway, yes. Yeah. It is, it is pervious, or at least semi-permeable. Um, it's not, um, it, it, you know, it's not super flat, so it doesn't introduce a ton of additional runoff, but it's more, the concern is, you know, having like a fertilized lawn right up against the tidal wetlands.
So, that whole area back there by the pool, you recommend that they revegetate or vegetate with...
I think, yeah, it's, I think, you know, ideally, there would be some revegetation there. Um, I think that, you know, if it's just within the buffer that is from where the wall is in the gravel pathway to the, that wetland where, because it does come up a little bit, um, I think that would be okay. Um...
And our nexus for asking could be for, especially since sod is not compatible with HPOD standards. So, do you feel that asking for this, uh, revegetation using, trying to keep more in the limits of what's before us with HPOD?
Yes.
And that would make a nexus for us to request additional mitigation?
Yeah, I mean, the existing conditions of the property are certainly not in keeping with HPOD. I, I think, um, you know, there is an IA sanitary system, that's, that's good, you know, um, but HPOD does kind of prioritize, you know, maintaining some sort of vegetation along the protected natural resources and the surface waters that are supposed to be protected. Having a fertilized lawn is not necessarily...
Well, it's also some pretty substantial landscaping on this property, so there's probably the amounts of nitrogen, I think. I'd probably, it's, I'd like to see a buffer there. I would.
Two.
So, just to clarify for me, are you talking about the length of that wall, that you're recommending a buffer, or primarily in the northeast corner?
Essentially, from where the wall ends to the wetland, you know, the buffer between where the wall ends to the wetland.
But that would be then on the north, the north edge of the property rather than on the east side?
Right.
As I'm looking at this.
Just point to it on there.
Yeah, can you show us on there?
Yeah, I mean, I, no, I don't know what the exact square footage off the top of my head would be. I mean, the gravel path is here. It's this yellow highlighted part here. Um, I think any vegetation, any additional native vegetation, um, within this area here is better than what's there.
What about all the grass going across?
Yeah.
And the walkway that's 26 feet from the wetland?
Yeah, and also, you know, any additional, any planting there should also accommodate, you know, some sort of access path around, um, the structures that are there.
So, can we clarify this first sentence in, under the project description, to allow removal of existing walkways, wall, and ornamental vegetation? Okay, so what is being removed?
Nothing is being removed anymore. That was a part of the scope of work that was submitted by the applicant initially. Uh, basically, it has to do with the stop work order.
I'm sorry, what?
It has to do with the stop work order that was put on the property.
But was ornamental vegetation removed? Do we know?
I do not know. I mean, the work was essentially completed, um, by the time we got to our review.
And there's a lot of miscanthus, right? Was it miscanthus down near the water and am I right on that, or no?
It was in lawn. I would say it was a lot of hydrangeas in lawn.
And then on the landward side of the houses, there are a lot of ornamentals, hydrangea and all that.
Yeah, I think we are a little less concerned with the landward side of the house than the water side of the house.
It's done. I mean, I know it's pre-existing non-conforming clearing, I get it, but at the end of the day, it's heavily developed, and it's, you know, 2.7 times more than what, you know, the HPOD standard is, which we often look at, and, you know, the planners very often want to see any revegetation where there's any kind of nexus to it.
Thank you. Any other questions? John, come on up.
I think the proposal by the planning department is fine. That, that northeast corner, uh, so, the wall, for lack of a better term, the wall that's on the landward side of the house returns back towards Lake Montauk and, um, to the, uh, maybe from the deck over, uh, could be, could be, if there, to say there's any lawn there now, um, that whole area could be made as, um, beach grass. Uh, in addition, I think the planning department is saying that it's the fertilization. I know, I know it's hard to enforce, like, I get it, but, but a covenant is better than nothing, because it puts any future owners on notice, and if somebody, you know, there's, there'd still be a violation that the town could enforce if someone were to use fertilizers or pesticides on the lawn. Um, so, I, I think that's a reasonable ask on the part of the planning department. It's something we'd be willing to do, to the extent that the, where the wall returns everywhere on that northeast corner could be, uh, made to have no grass, uh, just native. I guess you wouldn't care if it was, uh, native vegetation approved by the planning department.
Sure.
As opposed to beach grass. Um, again, the wall has no known detriment. Nobody's saying it's hurting anything. Um, and, uh, if anything, there's probably a benefit, because there, there is some flooding from the street down there, uh, which is another reason for the wall, was to prevent the house from being flooded. So, uh, to the extent that that retaining wall was built, it, it does help keep any of the driveway runoff from heading down towards the, uh...
Right, wow.
Thank you.
There's a landscaping plan in the file. It was received by us May 1, 2024. Was this already done? Because it was, that, yeah. So, was this already completed? And it looks like everything on here is, or a lot of it is non-native and was all like ornamental.
Uh, yeah, this, uh, this was done. Uh, to the extent that the notice said that removal, uh, removal of ornamental vegetation, I can see in this corner, it says, "Privet to be removed." So, there's probably something.
I guess the question is, you know, how, the work that was done was done without a permit and without an NRSP. Um, I would imagine if this had come before us as an NRSP at the time, we would have not approved this landscaping plan, I, I think, because it's all, it's non-native, it's all ornamental. So, that's, I'm just kind of...
Oh, I can clarify that. So, you don't need a natural resource permit to, um, to, like, reseed your lawn or, or that, and so, I, I think this is a plan, but, um, we would not have needed a natural resource permit for 90% of what's shown there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Anybody in the public would like to address this application? Is there anybody online?
You have zero callers. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
We're not leaving anything open.
No.
Then in the application of Wataview 3 LLC, 232 Westlake Drive, Montauk, Suffolk County, Tax Map 300-12-4-29. I'd like to mention, make a motion to close the public hearing and the public record at this time.
Second. I concur.
Concur.
Concur. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Then we walk next door. Exactly, next door.
Yeah, I know. Saved me a lot of time. It's very, very efficient to have two next to each other.
Our next application is David and Lisa Welsh at 240 Westlake Drive, Montauk, Suffolk Tax Map number 300-12-4-28, 28.1. Size and location is 55,371 square feet at 240 Westlake Drive, lots four and five, block 155, Montauk Beach Development Core. File September 7th, 1927, is map number 1024 in Montauk. The description is to demolish an existing 3,022 square foot of one-story residence and construct a 5,139 square foot two-story residence with an attached garage, 600 square foot pool and spa, 1,914 square foot of decks, 278 square foot patio, outdoor shower, IA system on a property containing tidal wetlands. The relief sought is a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255-420 of the town code, and one variance is required for this application. A variances of, a variance of 21 feet is needed from 255-375B to construct the IA sanitary system, 179 feet from the wetland where 200 foot is required, and any other relief necessary. Zoning district is a residence, ex-flood zone, VE8, and the secret class is type 2. Counsel, do we have proper affidavit of service and posting?
Um, Beth, do you have a copy? Did you, who sent it in? Uh, they were, yeah, they were FedEx to you, um, on Friday. I don't know if I got a copy. Do you have it, Morgan?
Yeah.
I'm looking now, too.
I didn't get an email to me, so...
There is postings in the, on the, on the line.
I'm sure. I just...
Oh, it's a photo of the posting.
Sam or coordination is not...
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, everything's good.
Thank you.
It's fine, yeah.
Thank you.
It was properly posted. It's kind of weird...
This was properly posted. It's kind of weird that you can hardly see the ink, but when if you were in front of it, you could. And it was up all week, so I can confirm that it was all official and correct. Anyway, next. Now this, I'm just inside the gate now and shooting across from the south, yes, south over to the northeast direction of the property. Uh, this is a complete redevelopment and there's a new IA system all put through this this area. And the house will be moving slightly landward and into a total redevelopment. We'll go through the pictures, walk around. Next. Uh, now just turn and this is a shot down toward Lake Montauk from the southern southern lot lot line. Next. Now, this is up near the gates also that to enter the property. And again, this is another shot. This is there's a uh bridle path area that's embedded in that fence somewhere. And again, where the sanitary is going to be is proposed to be going. Next. Uh, now I'm down the other end, uh actually near the tree that you saw in the previous picture. And I'm looking is this the north and facing the east and we're going to go down toward the the water, sun water. Next. Uh, this is shot next to the house and that's the there's a neighbor's house in there. That's the nearest neighbor to the property aside from Water View that we just had. Uh, next. And this is a shot from the north towards the south. Again, showing the big expanse of the property, very nice property. Next. Uh, here's where it drops kind of down toward the to the shoreline from up here. And again, this property has a lot of grass as you see, and the grass also goes up right into the the waterline. Next. Uh, there's a pathway that goes through there. Uh, next. And you end up down here at the water. You can see there's grass and next, there's just a couple of shots. This is in the northernly, the southernly direction. And actually, you're getting a shot of Water View. Um, next. Uh, this is just a nice shoreline, the water. And next. Uh, I just turned around and shot took a shot back to the existing house, which will be demolished and replaced. And next. And this is the uh greenhouse and the shed that are going to be, well, everything's getting redeveloped. Those will be removed as part of the project. Uh, next. And this is shot across the existing house from the south toward the north um with the the deckings that exist. And I think that's it. Is that it?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Okay, one quick question.
From Nelson Pope and Voorhees here on behalf of the applicant.
Have a a survey date of March tenth, twenty twenty five. We'll see March sixth. Just want to confirm that's the latest. Because we did get some new. Getting submitted a new survey. Okay.
I'll get to that. Um, so Brent Reiner from Nelson Pope and Voorhees here on behalf of the applicant, uh David and Lisa Welsh. Do you need to swear?
You swear for him to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Uh, here with me tonight is Beth Baldwin, attorney for the applicant, and Robert Young and Andrew Patti from Robert Young Architects. They are the ones that designed this beautiful house. Very quick background on the product on this application. It was submitted in August of twenty twenty four after an extensive review with town staff and vetting with the architectural team in a good faith effort to design a project that met all of the town zoning standards, including H pod requirements. Uh, so when we made the submission, we were hopeful that we were going to um help to speed up the review process with the design that we thought was 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 going to be um worthy of meeting the town's standards. During the review process, it was brought to our attention that there were some things that were um worth reconsidering in terms of the product design. Uh, we heard the first round of comments and submitted updated materials to staff's review in March of this year. Um, and then once again, we heard comments um from the town staff and resubmitted again just recently as as recently as um Friday, I believe. The latest round of of responses and sorry of revised materials is in response to the technical review memo um from um September. And just to go over to a point that was already made, the the materials that are in front of you that are currently in your file that are considered the most up to date. The only thing that's not included is the survey, and we just didn't have enough time to get to that. But everything else that you're seeing is is intended to be consistent with the product that is being um that has been revised slightly to meet the town staff comments as best as we can. And I can go through those revisions really quick. High level, um, we were responding to to staff's comments about the architectural plans not needing more clarity with regards to the GFA and the basement slab not meeting groundwater separations. Plan revisions have been made to address those things. The GFA is now clearly noted. And the basement elevation for the slab and the found the footings now meets the two foot separation. So the basement has been shrunk in height to to make that work. The sanitary plans have been reconsidered. We've taken a long look at how we can get this system back into a conforming location. When it's stick informing, it's to meet the two hundred foot setback. You know, there's some discussion to be had about whether a hundred fifty foot setback would be appropriate here. Um, we're conceding to that, and we're trying the best we can to get the system behind two hundred feet. In order to make that happen, the sanitary engineer had to get a little bit creative. And the architectural team had to work with the owner to make some interior shifting to allow the plumbing to work and a system to meet the health department standards using ejector pumps. So the idea is that um, again, the plan that we'll go through in a minute is intended to to get as close as we can for that entire sanitary system to be to the two hundred foot setback. So with the redesign, we're at a hundred ninety nine point five feet. If I could pause here and take a sidebar, the application that's before you is for an NRSP and a variance for the sanitary system. That is the only variance that we were requesting. And that original variance that was being requested has now been reduced to half a foot. So I wanted to make that point very clear. It was, you know, a lot of work to get that done, but um we feel confident that this is a sanitary system that is um going to function and it meets the health department's standards. There is an application pending before the health department. This new sanitary system design has not yet been um submitted to them. It's in the process of being submitted, or I should say it has not yet been formally reviewed. We don't have a notice of of comments from the health department. The third thing I'd like to to note with regards to the updated materials is you'll see that the vegetative buffer in plan, the the new proposed non-disturbance non-fertilization buffer, i.e. the expansion of the scenic easement is now a variable width. Sorry, buffer that is equivalent to a seventy five foot setback from the wetlands. So we feel as though we've made a an even. We put our another foot forward to 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 make this an even better application and provide as much mitigation as possible. So um, before I get started on walking you through all of the mitigation, I'm sorry, all of the comparisons of the of the project and the mitigation, I just want to make a note that the DEC did issue a title well and permit for this project in September of twenty twenty four. And to reiterate, the health department review was pending, we believe, pending approval, subject to this board issuing its NRSP. But we are going back to them for a modified sanitary plan, as you're going to see on on this screen.
Can you tell me where's the existing sanitary?
Yeah, great question. This this plan is is intended to help um look at all of that. It's right here.
And the proposed, yeah.
Yeah, so it's roughly in in the living room of the proposed house. So the idea is that this project is intended to move everything back. This is a full retreat of all of the existing site improvements, and I'll go through that really quick. Current setbacks of the existing house are is ninety seven feet. We're moving the house back to a hundred and one feet. Setback of the existing deck is seventy one feet. We're moving it back to a hundred feet. The masonry and patio, um, this this note is actually for the patio that's around the greenhouse. But that's at um fifty four feet. Um, the new masonry patter patios are going to be on the other side of the house at a hundred and fifty five feet. There is no pool, but the pool that's being designed is is designed in a conforming location at a hundred and one feet from wetlands. And then the sanitary system, existing sanitary system is at a hundred fifty two feet. The proposed is at a hundred ninety nine point five feet. There is a slight reduction in building coverage as part of this application, but we believe that it's offset by the substantial buffer that you can see on this plan. Yeah, so if you look at this plan, the blue represents the proposed and the red represents existing. Again, you'll see that retreat. And you will see um a a very clear distinction of that growing buffer that is going to be vegetated with a full palette of seaside appropriate native vegetation. This project was designed, again, not just to meet the standards, but in some cases fall well below them. Because this application was submitted in August of twenty twenty four, uh, we are um exercising the GFA standards that were in place at that time. So looking at the what we'll call the old GFA standards pre-July first twenty twenty five, this site could yield a GFA of sixty four hundred square feet, sixty four zero three, actually, to be exact. The proposed GFA is fifty one thirty nine, which is actually twenty percent less than what would have been allowed at that time. So there was no intention to ever overbuild this site. Yeah, the architects took a very good look at it. It's part of their model as a firm to study project sites and make sure that they're designing below the standards, not up to them. And that was intended to, um, that was sorry, that was, you know, by design. So um real quick, looking at the um the mitigation associated with this project. I hate to look at other applications, but you just saw the neighboring property. This project represents a massive improvement to the existing site conditions. The IA the IA system is a massive upgrade. The increase in setbacks, introduction of of proper drainage to capture stormwater runoff from all of the impervious surfaces, the incorporation of gravel driveways where we can. The use of a, sorry, the expansion of a vegetated buffer with um a very specific type of vegetation that we know will succeed in this environment without the use of any fertilization or irrigation. Irrigation would be required maybe for the first year, but after that, it's a set it and forget it type of situation, possibly some weeding. But it's intended to to mesh with what would need be seen in this location naturally. Um, Morgan, but you might pull after.
Before you, you can come back.
Oh, I'm sorry. If you if you want to stack on that plan, that's fine, because I was going to finish with a re-vetch plan.
Go ahead, and we'll talk to you then.
Yeah, so you can see right here, we're not just using one monoculture of, you know, beach grass or um little blue stems or, you know, just a meadow type of environment. We're using shrubs and grasses and permixing to create the natural wildlife habitat that you would need to see along this um this highly scenic um corridor. So that's all I have for my presentation. I would like Beth to come up and give you just a quick understanding of the natural resources standards. But while I'm here, if you have any questions.
All right, I got a question. I want to drill down into this. Uh, let me answer you this question. The septic system that um was proposed for that the TAM wrote was a gravity fed system?
Yes, the original system was a gravity fed, yes.
And the TAM is referring to already as a most conforming. Why introduce mechanical pumps to try to improve the most conforming location by the? I don't know if that's a better system. We're introducing.
We're we're happy to fall back into the system.
Mechanical pump. It's 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 like, uh, that's something that's going to require more maintenance. It could fail. I I would say of gravity fed is probably it's better way to go here. I don't.
You were at one sixty nine before this? You were something like one sixty nine away?
I think it was one seventy five.
Okay, all right. You don't have to repeat it, but nonetheless, you gained you gained yourself twenty feet or so by moving it back, but you have to now rely on.
Right, twenty point five feet.
Okay, mechanical. And you didn't in in this new configuration, you're not going out into the bridle path.
Correct.
So you had to reconfigure it in a way to make it work without getting in the bridle path?
Yes, and still max meeting the four foot separation of groundwater, yes. But, um, Mr. Chairman, I I couldn't agree with you more. We would prefer to use a gravity fed system, but again, in an attempt to try as best we can to meet your standards, we found a way to make it work. You know, I've just I've worked on many of products that have ejector pumps. I guarantee they are not the preferred method. But with the, you know, certain backup generators or whatnot and solar use of solar, it's 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 possible. You know, and the health department does approve them. So again, we would take that under advisement. If that's something that this board would rather see, we're happy to go back to the original design.
Well, we can hear from both, well, we hear from planning as well.
Yeah, so um, I'm sorry, was there another comment on the comparative analysis plan?
When you when you did put up the uh planting plan, it answered one of my questions. I couldn't read the notation to you to see what you were doing in this particular drawing here. But then you put up the uh, you just had a planting plan up, and that did show us that what was happening here. Yeah, in that area, I see that. And that's the area that uh was off color coming back towards the house. You're saying it's going to have a variety of plantings, not just the blue stem, the large and small. You're going to be talking about other things.
Correct.
Of course, that will run by our planning department for approval.
Yes, a hundred percent. And we're willing to work with the town on the plant selections if they don't agree with what we've chosen.
Was this submitted Friday? Was this one of the ones that came in Friday?
Yes, it was.
Do you want to see?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Anybody want to see the plants? Are they the same plants basically on the previous plan that you had submitted for the?
Yes, yeah, the plant palette is is and it's consistent with what is on the town's list of acceptable native plants.
Any other questions?
Yes, please. So two questions. Number one, so with the improved or the greater buffer, right? So I know you said you didn't have time to turn around the new survey, but do you have an estimate that proposed after revegetation on the most current survey that we have is thirty six thousand seven one seven? Is that um actually improving off of that or?
It's going to be more than what was shown on the survey.
Do you have any rough magnitude of how that thirty six seven one seven will change?
Unfortunately, I'm sorry, I don't. I would be speaking out of turn if I tried to guess. I will say this. Currently, the vegetative buffer area is around thirteen hundred square feet. What we're proposing is actually is closing in on fifteen thousand square feet of buffer.
So thirteen hundred to fifteen thousand.
Yes.
And then my second question, just if you could reconcile, so the memo from NPV dated August twelfth, twenty twenty four had construction of a sixty six thousand four hundred and four square foot two story single family house. And now obviously it's at five, what's number five, one thing?
Uh, the new number is five one.
One three nine. So what, I mean, did you shrink the house? Was that a mistake? And if I understand the plans well, looking at them, it looks like the sort of center part of the house is uh double height internally. So under our code, as you probably know, double height counts twice, you know, area that's under double height counts twice to GFA. Has that been taken? Has that double height been included in the five one three nine?
That's a very good question.
Because I was sort of wondering if the six four oh four was actually the number with double height, and this one is not, but I think.
Okay, so that is a very good question. Outside of my area of expertise, but these two fine gentlemen right here could answer that very quickly for you.
Okay, thank you. I'll wait.
Yes.
Hi, joining to Robert Young, the architect.
You swear for him to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Uh, so the the area in the center that's double height has structural uh ties that go across at less than fifteen feet. So it's not possible to occupy that space. So it's not possible to occupy that space anyway. That's the.
But it's still open in double height?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, there'll be an issue for the building department, won't it? Yeah, I mean.
Well, is it included in the?
I don't know, is it included or?
Not included because of that, because it's not a.
So you didn't count it?
It's not, it's not included.
So under a code.
He's saying, you're saying.
Part of GFA because it's not occupiable, it's not habitable. Yes.
Yes, to speak of the mic.
Yeah, go ahead. Andrew Pateen from Robert Young Architects.
Do you swear for him to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
There's also a portion on the side wing, the garage side of the house, that is double height, because that's the connection to the second floor there. And everything that is above the fifteen foot is counted twice for GFA.
Thank you.
Yep.
One other question, one other question, just about the, there was a comment that you achieved the distance from groundwater by reducing the basement area, the height of the basement. What what happened there? You went from what to what?
The numbers? We raised it up, so we didn't change the house at all, we just moved.
Right, but what is you, what is the headroom now below? Is that still seven foot or more? So the the result of you moving it up is seven foot eight? Okay.
Thank you. So if there's no more questions at this time, I'd like for Beth to come and just give you a rundown on standards. Thank you.
How are you, Beth?
Good evening, Elizabeth Baldwin, on behalf of the applicant.
You don't have to.
My role too, I should just swear tonight. Good evening, board members, Elizabeth Baldwin, attorney for Essex, Hefner and Angel, on behalf of the applicants. You have heard the project overview from Brandt, and I wanted to just go through the NRSP and variance standards, the town code, and summarize how this project meets these standards. I did submit a memorandum in support of the application on Friday with the packet. So I don't think I need to go through in full detail, but I did want to note a few important aspects of the project. I did want to start out by pointing pointing out that the applicant started with this project with the intent to not only fully comply with regulations set forth in the town code, but to be well below those regulations. The applicants appreciate the environmental sensitivity of the project and sought to maximize the distance to the wetlands by presenting the board with a reasonable project that takes the environmental conditions into account. We do not believe that any of the natural features will be diminished in size, polluted, degraded, or lost by this proposed project. Not going to go through the numbers again, Ms. Brandt did that for you. But I think you can see that a lot of these development projects sometimes tries to max out, you know, their numbers without taking into account the environmental sensitivity of the problem of the of the property. I think this is not one of those situations. I think the architects have proposed a a residence that incorporates the environmental conditions of the property, and the mitigation offered will offset any additional coverage and improvements on the property. The revegetation on on this property, I think, as opposed to other properties along West Lake Drive, you'll notice this revegetation will be will provide much more a buffer for non-point pollutants and all of the issues that I know are important. The board looked out for in HPOD regulation areas. Another part, I think, this this property, the project as proposed is is not a sprawling property with with, you know, pools over here and accessory structures over here. I think the point was to keep it all contained in one area. It allows for the additional revegetation while also limiting the coverage on the property. As far as the sanitary system, I think the applicants would prefer what we had originally proposed that was noticed. However, I think in an attempt to to show alternatives, which I know is something that the board's looking for when they're going to be granting or looking at a variance, I think the point was to show that the applicant has explored all all alternatives, though we we feel that that first, the noticed sanitary system would probably be more beneficial. But we will let the board make that determination, I'm sure. I would like to hear what the planning department says about either one, so I think we can wait on that. You know, the demonstrating that this application demonstrates the town's goal of retreat. I think that's something that we do want to see on these these properties. And there, and then again, just about the extensive revegetation plan. I think overall, the applicant's project meets the standards set forth in the town code for the NRSP. One of the issues that that came up in the TAM with regard to GFA and whether or not the size could be reduced. I know that's always something that the board's looking at with respect to these properties. However, I think the applicants in this situation, they are building, this is a forever home for them. This is something that they anticipate. They have children, they anticipate their children and their children, children, the generations to come on using this house and and to make it work financially and functionally for them. This is a size that's fundamentally important to them, and we think that the with the mitigation offered that the size and the and that no detriment to the environmental conditions will occur based on this application. Let's see, I think let's see, what else does it have? As far as the variance standards, if we consider either both, I think both of the requests. I did question, and I know Brandt brought it up, but I did question the review of the the two hundred-foot setback versus a hundred and fifty-foot setback. This is an existing sanitary system. I understand that it's a redevelopment of the property. However, I don't know, I don't see where in the code it says that a redevelopment falls under the two hundred. We're not challenging it here, we're just, we are seeking the the variances that that we've been told we need. However, I do want to question that interpretation as to where that has come from, because I don't remember that being the case in the past. That being said, we do feel we meet the variant standards set forth in the town code. The benefit to the applicant will clearly outweigh the detriment to the to the neighborhood and the community, whether it's the six-inch variance or the little slightly larger but variance, the variance itself is minimal. There'll be no impact. It's a sanitary system, it's underground, it's going to be on the landward side of the house. There's going to be an extensive buffer to the wetlands. There's there's no alternatives. The the bridle path on the roadside of the property limits how much, we can't push it back any farther. I think the engineers did a great job of coming up with an alternative to this while still working within, avoiding that bridle path. And then no negative impacts to the environment or environment are anticipated. Rather, positive impacts should occur as the existing outdated sanitary system will be replaced with a new IA system. Additionally, the extensive revegetation buffer proposed by the applicant will offset any impacts. And as for whether the request is self-created, the applicant pushed the system as far away from the wetlands as possible. However, the bridle path limits getting any closer to the road. Obviously, you have more extensive review of all the standards within the memo. However, I just wanted to point something out. But overall, we feel that this project is a reasonable project for the property that meets both the NRSP and variance standards of the town code.
Any questions for?
Yeah. In the recommended project conditions, they recommend the seventy-five-foot revegetation plan and buffer. And you said variable, is it?
So I think the, so one of the things that, you know, obviously, they would like to maintain some of their lawn area, understanding that they do still need to do some extensive revegetation. So one of the things, and we we took this from the DEC, this is one of the things that the DEC and some other jurisdictions do as well, is taking the amount, if we did the full seventy-five-foot buffer to and calculating that amount, but rather than just putting it straight across, adding some on the side. So the average is out to be the same amount of revege. However, it's built up a little bit more on the side to preserve some of the the lawn area in front of the house that, you know, they still have, they have kids and things. You know, they want to be able to maintain some of that use of lawn area while still offsetting the the actual buffer to the water.
Okay, and you would put a scenic easement, you're in agreement to putting the scenic easement over that area?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just point out to you really quickly where that is. So it's really, so if you see this line right here, that represents the seventy-five-foot setback. Triangular pieces right here represent the offsets that equate to, so it's why we call it the equivalent buffer. Achieve the same square footage of buffering to create that root structure and limit, you know, the amount of any opportunity for irrigation and fertilization on the property. It's just intended to preserve some areas for the children to play and serve the same purpose.
Okay, now that two hundred foot for, is that because of HPOD?
Yes.
Yeah, the two hundred feet, right?
So usually, the code itself distinguishes between, you know, it's a two hundred foot in HPOD, but then it has an exception if you have an existing sanitary system, you you only have to meet a hundred and fifty feet. So when they originally went into the project, they were thinking they were meeting a hundred and fifty feet. However, during the review, it came up that the, I guess, the planning burden has been saying, has been interpreting it to require a two-hundred-foot setback when it's a redevelopment of the property. Don't know if it says that in the code, I didn't see it anywhere. But either way, you know, I think it's, the project itself is still a good project that I think, and I think the sanitary system is maxed out as far as it goes, regardless of what the setback.
And just to further discussion on this point right here. The system that was concluded with the most previous submission was designed to be in this location right here. And it and it's limited to going this way because of the.
Because of the, I'm sorry.
The bridle path.
The bridle path, yeah.
Well, there's also a comment about a tree.
Yeah, there is a tree there that.
The the beach tree?
Oh, yeah, it's right here. It's this tree right here that they were intending to preserve, and this tree right here. So you're pushing it over here. We couldn't achieve the setback regardless. This is the two-hundred-foot setback right here. So as you can see, as we go northwest-ish, it gets tighter to the property line. So that's why the very creative, we'll call it, you know, sharpening your pencil as tight as you can, engineering effort to to try to get that conforming system, pushed it back down here. You know, but really, you know, to have a gravity-fed system than wanted to be right here.
And so you would lose those trees that you're trying to preserve with the gravity fed? Or could you be just away from them?
These trees stay, right, yeah. So it was very important to the owner to preserve the trees.
So I just want to clarify, if it went to a gravity system, you would still be able to keep those? Okay, great, thank you, that's why, clarifying.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Morgan?
Hello again, Morgan, excited for the planning department. The parcel is located on the southwestern shoreline of Lake Montauk, which is a New York State significant fish and coastal wildlife habitat and a component of the iconic SRA Critical Environmental Area. The environmental constraints of the properties around Lake Montauk cannot be understated, and redevelopment of any of the properties adjoining Lake Montauk warrants a lot of consideration for any potential environmental impact. This property is within the Harbor Protection Overlay District and the Lake Montauk Scenic Area of statewide significance, both of which emphasize the importance of maintaining the natural resources within the area. The current residence is ninety-seven feet from the tidal wetland, and the new residence will be at one hundred and one point one feet from the wetland and is therefore conforming to setbacks. The proposal introduces a significant increase in the gross floor area of the residence compared to what currently exists. However, it does seem like the applicant has responded to most of the planning department's recommendations provided in our review. And the variance for the sanitary system has been reduced from twenty-one feet to half a foot. Something to consider for the IA options that are in front of the board is whether the benefit sought can be achieved by some other design. The benefit sought is up to the applicant to, you know, present to the board. If the benefit is a less temperamental system, but that is slightly closer to the wetland, that's their case to make. The planning department, as Chairman Daleen pointed out, did not have an issue with the original setback of a hundred and seventy-nine feet. I think it is laudable that they did what they could to get it further away, but that original setback wasn't necessarily an issue with our department in our review. The proposed revegetation within the Lake Montauk wetland buffer is also a large merit to the application, and the most recent plan submitted is satisfactory to the planning department. If we're going to be a little nitpicky, the herbaceous ones are, you know, not necessary. We're usually okay with, you know, leaf litter as ground cover and a more substantial woody buffer, but it this is, this is still a good revegetation for the area, and it is definitely going to provide a lot of benefits to Lake Montauk and and just improve the overall environmental conditions of the property. The area of the buffer is currently mostly cleared. I think in one of the recent submissions, the area now of the revegetation is sixteen thousand one hundred and seventy-seven square feet. That will bring the total clearing limits, based on a rough calculation I just did, to twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine square feet. Sixteen thousand three square feet is the max loud in HPOD, but this property does have, I think, a hundred percent pre-existing clearing or something close to that. Let's see, oh, placing a conservation easement over the revegetation is a strong recommendation from the planning department as a condition of approval, since it would protect the renaturalized wetland buffer in perpetuity. The buffer is an important factor when it comes to the property aligning with HPOD regulations and the consideration of the NRSP standards. I think they verbally said that they're okay with the scenic easement. It wasn't, it wasn't written in any of those submissions, so I just wanted to reiterate that the conservation easement is very important to, you know, the mitigation of this project. Oh, I, just some notes, we do, I'm requesting some scalable versions of the digitals that we got. The ones that we got on Friday are not scalable, so just to clean up the official record a little bit, that would be helpful. And then the revised survey showing, well, yeah, showing the additional wetland buffer. And any relocated structures? I think I made a quick note in the TAM about the pool coming, not meaning a double setback. I think that's probably a easy thing for them to address in a survey revision. And other than that. There's the pool equipment, yeah, there's a quick note at the bottom of the TAM. I think it doesn't meet thirty foot.
Yeah, they're putting it in the basement.
Yeah, just, I figured they would be, if they could move this in the sanitary system.
Wasn't noticed for variance.
Um, I don't have, is that one on any of the plans that we got, or is that going to be on the revised survey? On the architect plans? Yeah, yeah, so that's fine. Yeah, we definitely need that survey, so. But other than that, can I answer any questions the board may have?
What about the creative line they came up and discussed about the seventy-five-foot mark? They're not exactly done, but they're adding buffer to either north or south.
Yeah, that's fine, you know, it it's fine with the planning department. I do want to just note that the sandy area that is basically, that's within the wetlands. I think that would be hard to include in the revegetation itself, because it is within the wetlands. However, you know, allowing that area to renaturalize over time, save for, you know, the four-foot access path, is something that we also feel strongly about.
That's right, and that shows it is more than four feet, yeah.
So this is the wetland. So everything, obviously, seaward of that is within the wetlands. So it's really just the sandy beach area.
So you would like to see just a fourth foot?
Well, yeah, just allowing this to renaturalize, because it probably will, and just, but, you know, save for their access path.
Could you comment on the D, you had a concern about the potential for dewatering now that they've, they're meeting the two-foot to groundwater? Does that allow?
Yeah, that's not a concern anymore, as long as they're meeting the two-foot separation.
Can you say that final clearing number again?
Yeah, again, this, it may be maybe off by a little bit once we get the survey. I just did it based off of the information that I had on me, twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine square feet.
Twenty-eight thousand.
Nine hundred and seventy-nine.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address this application? Is there anybody online?
You have your own callers, thank you.
Okay, Beth, come on up. We're going to need to leave the record open for how long?
Updated survey in the scalable plan?
Right. How long? What's that?
Just like to know if the board has any opinion on the septic system. If they're okay with the original design, we would like to go back to it.
I, I'm pragmatist, I don't see why adding a pump is necessary here at all. That's, that's my opinion, not, we can pull the board on this, but, uh, I don't know.
Well, I think that the Planning Department already made their position, obviously they were okay with the previous location, so I'm happy with the previous.
I'm happy with it.
The new here, the new setback would be, I thought I heard two numbers, 189 feet or 179?
Whatever was noticed.
Noticed at 179.
Right, so we're, we would stay with what was noticed, which was 179, yeah.
And then, so in that case, the Health Department review is just pending your.
That's correct.
So where would the easement go? So the easement. Yeah, how far is it going to go to the?
To the water.
Oh, to where, oh, towards Westlake? No tie from here.
Because it kind of bends around the house, so it's going to end eventually.
Yeah.
It's going to cut at some point back to the property line? Oh, yeah, right here, he's standing right here. Where, or at the 100?
Maybe to the 100 foot.
At the 100 foot, at the 100 foot setback?
Yeah.
You gotta define it at some level.
Yeah, we'll have a, we'll have.
On the survey?
Yeah, we'll have, I'll have, you know, we'll have him hash it.
Yeah.
And then I'll have him, and then when we do the actual easement, he'll describe. So, okay, so, and then for the surveyor? Yeah, because now we're not changing the sanitary, with the scenic easement.
So how long?
Two weeks.
Two weeks of the.
Just, I know Dan is.
And we're waiting for the scalable.
Yep.
Files as well as the survey?
They should have been FedExed to you.
Oh, the digital files. The digital.
Oh, okay, we want you to get another copy.
Yeah, we got the scalable hard copies.
Okay.
We need the, a scalable digital.
Oh, they didn't come scalable to you. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, we'll get that to you tomorrow.
Yeah, that's easy.
Yeah, sorry about that.
So we'll leave the record open for two weeks.
Morgan for that quick math, I could have never done.
Two weeks?
We haven't made it.
I didn't even try, so.
We can still leave it, we can still shut it, well, I mean.
Yeah. Whether we need or not.
Of the application of David and Lisa Welsh, 240 Westlake Drive in Montauk, caps map 300, they're well, they're four, they're 28 dot one. Make a motion to close the public hearing, leave the written record open for two weeks for the applicant to provide an updated survey.
And the scalable.
And the scalable.
That would be like a minute, yeah.
So that's October, two weeks, October 14th. Yeah.
Today's the 30th.
Okay, let's go till October 14th.
Now second.
And I'll concur, and I'll concur.
I concur, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All night.
At least you moved up to the front row.
I know, it's a promotion.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have an administrative application this evening. It's Giski at 6 Powder Hill Road in East Hampton. Suffolk Task Map number 300 dash 90 dash 2 dash 1.2, and that's a 322 square foot porch and on a parcel within jurisdiction of freshwater wetlands. Morgan?
Yeah, so it's this proposed porch, I think there is an existing deck over here where the porch is proposed, so there's no increase in total coverage. There's probably an increase in building coverage, just the area of the porch itself, because it's going to have a roof. These are the wetlands over here, it's 132 feet, and we don't really have any issue with it.
I'm fine with this too, I reviewed this already.
I did too.
This is just for an admin, you're going for admin, right, yeah, okay.
Okay. By the way, I'll make a motion on, on Giski at 6 Powder Hill Road Lane in East Hampton Suffolk Task Map number 300 dash 90 dash 2 dash 1.2 to allow the application to proceed administratively.
Second.
Concur.
Concur.
Thank you. Post-hearing decision, and that's Stevie and Judy Kipano-Michelson at 2 Fieldview Lane, East Hampton. Suffolk Task Map number 300 dash 159 dash 1 dash 18.31. Size and location is 40,560 square feet at 2 Fieldview Lane, the fields of East Hampton, lots 31. Map number 6459 East Hampton. The description is to construct a 7,871 square foot tennis court with inside yard lot line setbacks. A relief sought is one variance of 32.5 feet. From 255 1110 and 255 1188 of the town code is required to construct a proposed tennis court, 17.5 feet from the eastern side yard lot line where 50 foot setback is required and any other relief necessary. And the zoning district is a residence zoning flood zone and Sukka class is type two. Maybe give me a second, I'm just going to. Okay. Uh, so this, on this application, the hearing was held on 8/19/2025. The applicant is Stephen Michelson and Judy Kipano-Michelson. It was represented by Thomas Crouch, attorney. The plans are dated 10/8/2024, Saska survey 11/13/24. And there was a well and file a response to the TAM dated 8/13/25. The Michelson family letter and also a Michelson family letter to the neighbors, which outlined that there would be no lighting installed, there would be a second tennis court, and there would be no games before 9:00 AM. There were five letters of support and one letter of concern. The application is, is seeking a single variance, which is to the eastern lot line. And it's a, it's in common ownership with the property owner. Our section 255 1120C provides for a parcel to have an accessory structure and providing there is no sufficient square, there is sufficient space to fit a principal residence. Tennis court meets the required setbacks on the remaining property lines, noting that they meet the double setbacks. Moreover, the, the, they're joining, it adjoins a reserve area to the west and a road right of way to the north. These, during the hearing, the ZBA did address with the Planning Department and the application of the, the, that the fact that there would be a resident, a primary residence could be fit on this property line, on the property. So I'm, I'm in favor of doing this now, the issue with these applications is providing uniqueness. And I think the, the uniqueness in this is that the only variance requested is from the common ownership. It meets all other setbacks and there's a reserve and a, and a, what do they say? There's a, um, reserve area to the west and a, and a right of way to the north. Um, I think this application does provide the uniqueness to approve this application. Um, I'm going to go through the, the, the standards and whether the grant to the variance will cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or will create a detriment to the nearby properties. It does outweigh the, uh, the, it does, the, um, does not cause an undesirable change in the fact that it meets all required setbacks other than the common ownership setback property line. Whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Yes, but I, it, it, in this case, the variance requested is also the best variance requested doing, being that it's in common ownership and that's the only variance that's being requested. Is a, is a requested area variance substantial? I would say yes. But once again, it's common ownership. There are no other area variances on either side of the property line. Whether the grant of the variance will have an adverse effect on the impact or on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood or in the affected area of the town. I don't think it's going to have an adverse effect. I think that we had the majority of neighbors that were in favor of it. And we had one neighbor that was a letter of concern, not really a letter of denial or, or saying it couldn't be done. And the fact that there would be no lighting and no play before 9:00 AM adds to that, adds to that reason. Whether the difficulty causing the applicant to request an area was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the determination of the board, but shall not necessarily preclude the grant of the variance. Yes, mostly, yes, it is self-created, however, I think the, the, the condition of this application is allowed, is, is, meets the standards being that, again, once again, the only variance requested is in common ownership. So with that, I will vote to approve the application. Jane, you want to go?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as we know, the TAM urges us that we will need to weigh the unique circumstances relative of this application and situation relative to other decisions the board has made in the past regarding tennis court side yard setback relief. And given how substantial the variance request is, so obviously, we're weighing that uniqueness as the chairman just discussed his view on that. But I, I have a, after a very careful review of the application materials and the public hearing proceedings and the public hearing file, I do not see this application meeting the standards for the area variance for a 32.5 foot or 65% side yard setback variance for this tennis court. As part of my deliberation, excuse me, I have again reviewed, I believe there are nine prior decisions listed in the TAM that were made by the zoning board over, I think, more than a decade with respect to requests for tennis court setback relief. Two points I draw from that review of those nine decisions, some of which were denials and some of which were approvals. Though there were a number of approvals of setback variances listed, the bulk, if not all of those variances approved, were for variances that were materially less substantial than in this application. I think they ranged closer to about 20 to 25% relative to the 65% we're looking at here. And in one case, an approval was given from a side yard abutting in ag reserve. With respect to the approval precedent, I am aware that Mr. Crouch during the public hearing made the case that the application for 225 Old Montauk Highway, I think decided 12 years ago, was the, in his mind, the most relevant of four of the decisions that he had focused on in a memo he submitted to the file. So I did consider that application very closely. And however, again, the variance granted in that application, I believe, is just a 10-foot variance, very different than what we're seeing here. So with respect to the denials that I looked at, um, you know, to consider relative to this application, we saw this passing horse denial that was a 64% variance. And the most recent of these decisions was 133 Sayers Path, where one of the three variances was, was, I think, like 90%. So during that public, during the public hearing, I raised to Mr. Crouch into the record the question about the relevance of 133 Sayers as a comparable application to look at. That decision, and I, I did look at that decision in depth as it is the most recent tennis court variance decision. It involves a setback variance relative to a lot line for another property that was also in beneficial ownership, two, two properties, you know, the, the lot line, sorry, the, the lot line variance was to the other property in beneficial ownership. And it was also a similar sized lot, just under an acre in an a residence zone. And the two variances for, which was a smaller court, were also substantial. So the decision, that decision was made back in December 2023, preceded my time on the board, but it was a 4-0 denial by my current four fellow board members. So as I see this application before us now, the case being made by the applicant for relief hangs solely on the current condition that the two lots in question are in common or beneficial ownership. However, that in and of itself is not necessarily a variance standard. I do not see that as constituting, constituting compelling uniqueness relative to the concern raised of establishing potentially problematic precedent. Moreover, even with common ownership, the lots are still two separate parcels and I think in large part, the application still must be assessed as such. No matter what assertions are made by the current owner that they will hold both lots in perpetuity, there is no guarantee and that can change at any time. And I believe there's a covenant that's being offered in case of the sale of one property or the other. It's just not clear to me that being feasible to be, to be enforceable. So as the TAM states, ultimately, not every property is appropriate for every amenity or pertinence. A parcel that's, in this case, sub one acre and 169 in width may not be the best candidate for a full-size tennis court, unquote. Um, and I would agree and, and think that's a very important thing to, to, to consider. I also know that this property already actually really benefits substantially from the western side because that town reserve converts that, that to a side yard setback needed as opposed to meeting the 100-foot front yard. So I do not find the condition, sorry, to wrap up, just turning to the variance standards very quickly, whether the grant of the variance will cause an undesirable, undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or will create a detriment to nearby properties. So I understand, I believe that expanding, expanded setbacks in our code are for a very specific purpose, to protect neighboring properties from the detriment of disturbance. And I, again, this is, would be in perpetuity. And I do see, this is a very substantial, even with substantial tree screening, I do believe this potentially creates a detriment to peaceful enjoyment. And if this were to become a precedent in this neighborhood, it would have great detriment to the character of the neighborhood. Whether the benefit sought by applicant can be achieved by some other method, if the benefit is to have a tennis court on this lot, there is definitely another, which is to merge, to merge the two lots that could have been done to create the benefit of the tennis court. The requested variance is very substantial, as I mentioned. And whether the difficulty causing applicant self-created, again, we know that this is a standard that is not a knockout punch if it is self-created, but, I mean, they bought a sub one acre lot with full knowledge that it would not be sufficient to build a tennis court without variances. So for all these reasons, I am compelled to deny this application.
Thank you.
Yeah, I go Terry first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Terry, I'm happy to let you go.
I too went back into some of the other applications that were listed in the TAM. And there was a lot of discussion at the hearing about 68 Prospect Hill in Montauk, which I was on the board for that one. It wasn't approval, it was not a unanimous approval. But I see that property being no way to compare with this property. And there was some discussion about a building inspector making a ruling that, on that property, that I guess, I'm not really sure if Thomas was objecting to it or thought it was a similarity with this property, but I don't see it that way. There, there was also on the list, they had Drucker listed, which was an approval at 39.5, which sounded. There, there was also on the list, they had Drucker listed, uh, which was an approval at thirty-nine point five, which sounded high and larger than the variance requested here. However, as turned out when I went back to that, um, there was, um, the side yard setback on that particular property would, would have required a hundred twenty feet, so the thirty-nine point five was actually only about a thirty-three percentage, um, variance on it. Now, this one is sixty-five. I think that this, this application, this does not meet the standards of, you know, the common ownership and the same concerns, you know, some things change and something could change that would, uh, leave somebody stranded or some other property owner, uh, you know, in a bad situation. But, um, so I think the, as far as the grant of the variance causing an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties, I think potentially it can. In the subdivision, there was also talk about, you know, swimming pools being, but apparently there's nowhere the tennis court in that whole subdivision, because Thomas did not bring that up. So I think that this does have the potential to cause some undesirable changes. And if the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by some other method feasible to pursue other than an area variance, I believe it could be. Um, this was a full, full-size tennis court, and some of the tennis courts that we've had in the past that did get approved or not, were smaller. And I think one option is for the, the applicant, they could have, they could look at making a smaller tennis court. And then whether the area variance is substantial, um, again, and Thomas said no to the sixty percent variance, which is actually, that's its sixty-five percent, and that is quite substantial. Granted, the variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions in the affected area of town. It may and may not on the physical or the environmental, but, um, whether the difficulty causing the applicant is self-created, I do think it was self-created. I mean, they bought the property and just wanted the tennis court on it, so, um, they did offer the covenant that was mentioned during the hearing. But I think that's not, not enforceable necessarily. Oh, I am gonna deny this application.
Thank you. Ed, okay, thank you. Um, this was an interesting one because we had to go back and look at several past cases and, uh, that information was provided to us in the TAM. I wanna go over that for a minute. Uh, it was that there were nine cases provided and there was a denial. There was the approval, and several of the approvals were significant, but this is asking for sixty-five percent variance. The Drucker approval, um, was significant, um, but that did have other circumstances, two front yards off of Tyson, and there was a fifty-foot, uh, buffer provided by the roadway beyond, and the board at the time agreed to that. That was probably a tough court at that point, too. I think in, in, the positive for them is that they were willing to, um, covenant the light restrictions. They were gonna, uh, dig this, uh, tennis court down, lower it, so that it was not going to be as obvious in the neighborhood. The Sun Contemporary Court would be for private use only. They're requesting a variance from themselves only at this point. That, that was all positives. The town on reserve to the west is a parcel to protect the people on that, from that direction. All of these are positives. However, I'm gonna come back to, uh, the fact that it's a sixty-five percent variance to themselves. That's true. But as was mentioned by, um, by fellow board members here, is that that property could change at any time, and if we then ask the future resident, uh, of the existing, where there's an existing house now, to inherit a property that has an oversized, uh, tennis court abutting within seventeen feet of their property line. I think that the comment in the TAM that not all properties can accept every appurtenance really affected my thinking on this. And I think the Sayers Path, uh, decision, which I was part of, we had a very similar thing, similarly owned, but we thought in the future, were we gonna allow this tennis court so close to the property that when they did divide that property, if it ever happened that way, the two properties were sold, what would we be asking the others to do? Since we're doing this in perpetuity, I then, at the end, had to balance what I thought was a very positive approach on them and trying to come up with a sensible tennis court. But I don't think it works on this particular property. I just don't think it does. I think that there is, there are limitations on what can happen on any one parcel. And then just going through the code, whether or not the grant of the variance will, the undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood, I'm gonna say yes, only because we have then created, uh, another example of putting tennis courts on undersized lots. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, of course it is, sixty-five percent. Whether the grant of the variance will have an adverse effect on the impact on the physical and condition, I say no. I don't think that's the case here. I don't think that's the condition on which I'm, I'm making my decision. And whether the difficulty causing the applicant to request the area request is self-created while he's asking for the, the tennis court. In the end, as positive as I think the approach was, the fact that we're asking this, that we're gonna, we're asking ourselves to be allowed a tennis court seventeen feet from the neighbor, uh, when in the future, that could come back to be a very negative for the future, but landowners somewhere down the line. I am not going to approve this application. Thank you.
The subject property is vacant with no CO issued on the property. Immediately to the west between property, uh, between the property and Roberts Lane, there is a thirty-foot wide town-owned reserved area. Two fifty-five eleven twenty C allows a property to have an accessory structure as long as the title to the contiguous parties is in the same name and there is space for a principal residence. The plan is to build a single-family house in the future with no variances. To me, what makes this unique is the side yard lot line variance that's being requested is adjacent to the applicant's neighboring property. They're basically seeking a side yard variance from themselves. The tennis court, in all other respects, I feel, meets the town code requirements outlined in two fifty-five eleven twenty C as long as the two properties remain in common ownership. Once the tennis court is built, and if not in common ownership, the tennis court would have to be removed. To alleviate noise and visual impacts, they are lowering the playing surface to be two to three feet below natural grade. They've also mitigated the tennis court with substantial screening by planting a forty-eight-inch arbor of ID hedge, which will surround the court. I feel this application does meet the standards, and I will be approving the application in its entirety.
Thank you. Counsel, you good on that?
Yep.
Three-two denial? Okay, we have the draft minutes of September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the draft minutes from September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five for the East Hampton Town Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
I concur.
I concur.
I concur. Thank you. Resolutions, we have three Georgia Association Road LLC modification. It's a Scrivener's error. At three Association Road Wayne Scott Suffolk Tax Map number three hundred dash two hundred dash three dash nine point one. Can, can you just describe quickly the Scrivener's Act error?
Yeah, this is on, this property's on Georgia Association Road, on Association Road there, and, uh, in our determination where it says contiguous bodies of water, just said NA next to, um,
Right.
next to that, even though it's right on the pond, so I just changed it to say it's not on the pond.
Thank you. I'll make a motion, uh, on three Georgia Association Road LLC modi- modification for, uh, three Association Road Wayne Scott Suffolk Tax Map number three hundred dash two hundred dash three dash nine point one to approve the modification with the Scrivener's error corrected.
Second.
I can't, no, I concur.
Thank you. Next, we have John Marino at sixty-three Benson Drive at Montauk, three hun- uh, tax map number three hundred dash thirty dash one dash twenty. That was me, I'm sorry. Let me get my glasses, change my glasses again. I thought I was done. Looking at the, I was looking at the wrong one.
You have the new one?
Yeah, I do have it, I have it here. Okay. Yeah, Marino, Marino at sixty-three, that was, uh, we talked about a deck. There was a deck accommodation and a shower in the back. That was a, um, uh, there was a discussion about it. We went on. That was a, uh, approval by the board for the deck, but a denial by member. What's your name again?
I denied the, um, House of Chair.
You denied the shower. It was denied the shower. So the vice chair denied the shower at that point, so I will, uh, I just have to find it.
I think it falls a lot of things.
I just have to find it. Hold on. Do you have it?
I, I have it.
Sorry about that. I put the wrong thing. So then in the case of, uh, John Marino, sixty-three Benson Drive, Montauk, Suffolkianic Tax Map three hundred dash thirty dash one dash twenty, I'd like to make a motion to accept the determination as written.
Concur.
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 I'm sorry, I was passing it to you because I thought we had that modification we were supposed to do tonight.
Are we doing this modification?
Yeah, no, I was trying to give it to the chairman to say that.
Are we doing Bronzo?
Which one?
The modification.
The modification? I don't know, I, we just got handed this. It's not on.
Here, it's, we got it, we got a sheet for it a week ago.
I know, but we got it. I thought we got it by email and said we were gonna do it tonight. That's, I just wanted to double check. Okay.
Okay, we ready to adjourn?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the zoning board of appeals meeting on September thirtieth at nine fifty PM.
Second.
Concur.
Concur.